I'd like to welcome you to the St. Louis County Planning Commission's virtual public hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning, or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Gail Cho, Acting Director of Planning, and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting on December 7. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. He or she will be allotted fifteen minutes. Then persons in favor of the request will speak. After that, persons in opposition or with concern. Speakers will be allowed three minutes. Please, you may only speak one time. To indicate you which to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear tonight's first petition, which is PC-18-21 Transportation LLC, which is a request for a change in zoning from C8 Planned Commercial to M3 Planned Industrial.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Doug May. I was here there. So this site is located in North St. Louis County, on the north side of Dunn Road, north of 270 there. So it's surrounded by generally highway commercial type uses as well as some light industrial. You can see the parcel there is shaded in the dark or the light gray there. So this is the parcel looking from Dunn Road, looking north through driveway towards the existing structure that's there. It previously was an animal hospital and it's a vacant structure today. This is looking west down Dunn Road. There's an auto body shop right to the west of the structure, as well as an advertising sign that you can see in the photo. This is looking east along Dunn Road. You can see there's a sign company located just to the east of the parcel. This is looking north closer to the structure. You can see the parking area in front as well as to the side. This is looking east towards the sign company that I just mentioned. This is looking west down towards Dunn Road. And you can see there's a substantial grade change as you go east to west. It slopes upward. Or I'm sorry, west to east, it slopes upward. This is looking north through the site on the east edge of the property. There's a couple outbuildings in the back of the property, a small shed and a garage. This is looking east along the back of the existing structure. This is looking north through the back area of the parcel. This is closer to the north property line. This is looking east towards the backside of the sign company next door on the east side. This is looking northwest. There's like a storage company of vehicles located to the northwest of the site. This is looking south back towards the structure. This is looking southwest along the west property line, towards the auto body shop there to the west. This is looking north along the west property line. You can see there's some existing trees and shrubs that kind of screen the properties. And then this is looking southwest towards the existing monument sign for the site and back towards Dunn Road and Highway 270.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Is the petitioner here?
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Clay Vance with Vance Engineering. I've got a PowerPoint if I can figure out how to share it.
I've just made you the presenter, Clay, so you should be able to share your screen from the sort of bottom bar or it could be.
All right. Now, a second. Let's see if I can figure this out. All right, is that working? Okay, so the request is for rezoning from C8. It is, as was indicated, it's surrounded by M1. And I'm here on behalf of Mr. Otis Lyles of Leela Investments, who would own the property, and One Transportation LLC, who would be the tenant, and he is both of those. And what his proposal is, is to operate a medical transport company for non-emergency medical transport for individuals. They would operate these out of the parking in the back. The vet office was, it's a converted home. They would be converting that from the vet clinic into some office space for his use. The site is located about halfway between Lewis and Clark and Lilac on the north side of 270. That purple line along there is 270. This is a copy of the site plan. It's somewhat hard to read. Here is existing and proposed site. And basically, you can see the entrance is already there. The parking out front is already there. And the house, the former house, the building is already there. And the added parking would be for storage of the transportation vehicles in the rear. They would likely fence that for some security and then modify the building for their use. And that's really the extent of the modifications. They were planning to go back and pretty much use the clear area of the rear yard of that structure. I believe that the existing building now does not have connection to sanitary sewer, but there is sanitary sewer on the site that we would be connecting to. It does have the property under contract. And again, it's what his proposed use would be non-emergency medical transportation. Would start with fifteen or so minivans operating out of there. It's a potential to get up to twenty-five of them or so. The... And then the additional uses, he would like to get all permitted M1 uses. Because as it is right now, this site is permitted as a C8, but it's permitted for a veterinary use. And I don't believe there's any other uses that are allowed there. So it kind of limits it. And for the flexibility and to be consistent with the M1 district surrounding it, he would like to be approved for permitted M1 uses along with his proposal to do the medical transport. You know, I don't really have anything else to add to this. It seems like a fairly consistent and a fairly light use for the property and shouldn't pose any kind of problems to the adjacent owners. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners? Anyone have any questions? What's the hours of operation? Monday to Friday? Is it six days, seven days?
I honestly don't know. If Mr. Lyles is on here, he could answer that question.
Yes, I'm on here. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hello there, everybody. Yeah, the hours of operation, they are six days a week. Although we do provide, because we are a non-emergency medical transportation service. We provide service to those in wheelchairs. Sometimes, on occasion, we have people who go to church or want to go to church, and they're confined to a wheelchair. Or they might have, you know, a function at their family's house or something like that, that we might operate one or two vehicles there. All my vehicles are minivans. They're not big vans. They're minivans with wheelchair ramps. So they're fairly a new fleet. And the hours of operation are probably anywhere from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 or 7:00 p.m. We're contracted with the state of Missouri, Logistic Care. And, you know, whatever their needs are, or people's needs. We have sometimes people who get discharged from hospitals and need our service. So we might have one or two vans out kind of late. But other than that, the majority of the evening is really a basic 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you very much.
Wayne, I have a question for him.
Yeah, go ahead.
Any modification will be done to the property or to the building?
Yes, the building is, right now, the property, okay, like Clay had described, the back area will be paved, will probably put up security fencing, might have a secure gate to where you can't go in and out the back area back there. Also, the inside of the building, currently, it has, that's probably twenty different rooms in there. I guess when they had the animal hospital, they had all the different rooms divided up for the different, you know, pets and stuff. So we will get an engineer to come in and kind of look at that, look at how we just make it into a couple of offices, a little sitting area or something like that. We're going to make it more open than what it is currently.
Okay, but you won't have the people sitting there per se, just have the people that are working there, is that right?
Oh, yeah, that's it. No, no, no clients or stuff like that will be sitting there.
Okay, any signage or are you going to change the existing signage?
Yes, yes.
What's that going to look like?
Well, I kind of talked to my neighbor there. He owns a sign shop. He's the one that put up the signage up there right now. So it wouldn't be probably too much more bigger than that. It might have a couple of more lettering and labels to it, but practically pretty much the same size.
Okay, so it's a seven-day, seven-days-a-week operation then?
Well, it's basically six days a week, but, you know.
I thought I heard you mention church.
Yeah, except for people that every now and then, those are one-offs, except for on the holidays. Now, one thing about, we take a lot of people that go to dialysis, and they have to go three times a week. And the only holidays that the dialysis centers recognize are Christmas, New Year's, and Thanksgiving. And on those three days, when that falls on their week, they shut down for that, but they open up on Sunday.
Okay. Do you hold veterans also?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All righty, thank you.
And we're looking to employ as many people as we can. The hardest part is finding very good drivers who love and care about the people that they transport.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is Lou Cunningham. How many vehicles do you plan to have stored in the back?
We're creating parking spots for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five spots. There won't be, right now, I have fifteen vehicles. So we created twenty-five just for expansion, just in case we need a few more.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, Mel, do we have anybody wanting to speak?
We do have a couple. We'll start with Angela Pineks. Angela, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, Angela Pineks of Spanish Lake CDC and the Community Development Corporation. And we actually had discussions with Mr. Lyles and Mr. Jeffries. And as a representative of the community, we are in favor of this development as they, the purpose and the mission aligns with ours of improving the quality of life for the residents of Spanish Lake, job development, and useful services for the senior and disabled, assisting senior and disabled. So we are in agreement with that and grateful that they've chosen Spanish Lake to expand their business.
Okay, thank you. Mel, anyone else?
Okay, we have Julie Griffith. Julie, you are unmuted. Julie Griffith? Okay, we do have another. Andrea Moore. Andrea, you are unmuted.
Yes, good evening. I received the letter through my son's school. He's a student at Trinity High School. And I was told it was a convenience store that was proposed. Is that not correct?
That's the petition on the agenda.
Oh, okay, so we're talking about the, what is this one?
This is for a proposed medical transportation facility.
Okay, okay. And I am a resident of Spanish Lake. And the other one was, anybody know about the Malley's supermarket that's supposed to be built and open on, what's that, Becker?
This public hearing, it just is on three very specific pieces of ground. The very first one that we just had is one off of Dunn Road for the medical transport. The next petition is for the proposed convenience store at Redmond and Lusher. If that's the one that you'd like to speak to, we will come back to you at that time.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
You're welcome.
Okay, anyone else?
Let me look. Okay, we'll go to Kim. Kim, you are unmuted.
Hi, this is Kim, and I say no, no more buildings, and thank you.
Okay, I think that is all the public comment. I'll go one last, one call for public comments for this petition. If you'd like to speak on PC-18-20, please click the raise hand icon next to your name. And if you have already spoken, Angela and Kim, you can unclick your hand at this time. But I don't see anyone else, Mr. Hillsinger.
Okay, I don't think we need rebuttal then. You're taking a show of those in favor or opposed at the end, right?
Whenever you leave the meeting, if you leave right now, or if you left at the very end of the meeting, you will receive a survey to complete, asking if you are in favor or opposition to all of the petitions on tonight's agenda.
Okay, then we'll go on to the next petition, which is PC-19-20. Amen. I cannot pronounce the last name. But it's a request for amended C8 Planned Commercial District in the southeast corner of Redmond and Lusher Road. Convenience store and all C2 shopping district permitted uses.
Okay, so this site is located at the southeast corner of Redmond and Lusher Road, right there at Highway 367. You can see it there outlined in red. It's surrounded by generally kind of highway commercial uses with some residential, single-family residential beyond that. It's the light gray parcel there in the center of the map. Okay, so this is looking south along Lusher Road at the entrance to the site. This is looking northeast through the site. It's been fenced off. It's vacant currently, but there used to be a gas station convenience store on the site. This is looking northeast through the site again, a little bit closer to the fenced-off area. This is looking east down Redmond Road. This is looking southwest back towards Lusher Road and Highway 367. I'm looking southwest again. You can see that there's some foliage along the, let's see, east property line. This is, you can see the lot that's just to the east is vacant as well. And there's some foliage, some brush that screens the two properties. This is looking east along the south property line. There's some vegetation that screens it from the property to the south, which is an auto body shop. And this is looking north across Redmond Road. That's a vacant convenience store and gas station right across Redmond Road there. And then this is looking west towards Redmond Road, going under Highway 367. And we're ready for the petitioner's presentation.
Good petition.
Okay, John, I'm going to use the presenter.
Okay.
So then you will be able to share your screen.
Okay. So you want to go ahead and share the PowerPoint now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to give a shot. Here we go. What's going on? Okay, are you guys seeing that?
No.
I'm sorry?
We're not seeing anything.
I can't hear her.
She's muted.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
There should be a share button with an arrow with a box sort of around it, near the bottom of your screen.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
There should be a button near the bottom of your screen that says share or share content with an arrow.
Right, I got that.
So click that, and then you'll have to click PowerPoint or Adobe or whatever you have the presentation in. Yes, it's coming up.
Okay. Are we liking that? What? Is that coming up?
It's come up, but it might be better if you go back out of presentation.
Get me off of this thing. I can't hear shit.
It's still still coming in.
I'm trying, but I don't know how to get off of that. Hang on, I'm having some technical difficulties.
You may want to take it out of presentation.
Yeah, I'm trying to. I don't know, it's... The audio all of a sudden went bad. I'm sorry, hang on one second. Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, let me see if I can figure this thing out. He's got me in some weird place. Okay, can you see that at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so here we go. So anyway, we want to build a grocery store on that corner where the old gas station was. And contrary to popular belief, it's not a convenience store. It's going to be a full-line grocery store, 6,000 square feet. And ASM Market, we have nothing to do with Malley's. I think that lady said something about Malley's. We're not Malley's and have nothing to do with them. And this is the location that we talked about a little bit earlier. It's at 11792 Lusher Road. I think the planner went over all of that. We own the property. We've already done some cleaning on it. We can do a little bit more once we get our land disturbance permit. But we're going to take the facility and clean it up to a Class A level. It'll be minimal impact on the construction because the existing site infrastructure is already all in place. The approaches are to remain as they are. The storm soars are already in place. Sanitary sewers available at the property edge, gas available at the property edge, electric is available at the property edge, and water is available at the property edge for the new tap. So all the utilities have already been brought to the site, and they were obviously abandoned when the old place moved. But they're available and ready to be rejoined and brought up to code. So everything's there, minimal impact to the surrounding community during construction. No roadwork required, no St. Louis County approaches, anything like that. This is the site plan that was proposed and sent over. You can see there's no fuel. We're not going to do any fueling. It's straight-up grocery store, 6,000 square feet. We've incorporated additional parking and handicap accessibility from both directions. So we'll have that set up per county code and also just to make it more accessible for our clients. The site traffic is actually going to be down from what it was. The corner previously supported two convenience stores with fuel and substantial volumes. One of them was a quick trip, and that, of course, as we all know, generates significantly higher traffic than most similar convenience stores or markets. We will not be offering fuel, so that's going to reduce the traffic, the in and out. And again, we're going to have excellent handicap accessibility. So the traffic will be significantly less than it used to support. Of course, now everything's gone, which we're hoping to bring some of that back with the development we're going to bring in. So this is a rendering of the building that we proposed. You can see there's going to be brick and stone and nichihaw fiber cement panel systems. It'll be Class A, as good as anything you've seen in the county. We've got exterior lighting, plenty of it, landscaping, another view of the building that's proposed. And the plans are submitted, and they have them. So they do match what we're showing you. This is what will be built. And that's another rendering, a different little angle. But you can see we've got some nice landscaping, good colors, high-end building, great finishes. It's going to be a full-line grocery. We're going to offer everything. So you can get anything that you need in our grocery store, 6,000 square feet. We'll have fresh meat. We're going to have produce selections, dairy, fresh dairy. And there also is going to be a large kitchen where they're going to be preparing meals and food on-site. So the community, a lot of the services that are missing from that site right now, we'll be bringing onto that site. We also partner with local law enforcement. We're going to offer them a spot. We've already spoken to them. We do business in some other areas. And we have good relationships with them where we give them a corner and they kind of call it a little substation. And we kind of got rid of that term, but we're going to give them a little spot and make sure that we have a good police presence. We're going to be working with the local schools and churches and law enforcement to work with the community, keep the kids out during school hours, those types of things. And also supporting, you know, whatever comes along from the neighborhood, sports teams, high school stuff, trips, you know, church conventions. We want to participate in the neighborhood, not just park ourselves there. We'll, again, the landscaping will be top-notch, it'll be meticulously maintained. We're going to have a whole bunch of... sprinkler systems, high end landscaping, similar to what you've seen in a QuickTrip, and it will be maintained. And then the site will also be incredibly well lit and security cameras and onsite security when required. Our hours of operation are gonna be between eight and eight. So we're not gonna be open at night. We're not gonna be causing any difficulty. We're gonna, there won't be any noise generation in the evening. And that's our short and sweet presentation. We have a much longer one, but I know this video sharing and all that, I don't think anybody's ready for it, so.
Do you have a site plan that you can show?
Yeah, let me go back to that.
Why don't you walk them through that?
Sure. Okay, well, there's Redmond and Lusher, and then there's an existing approach right there. An existing approach down here. And we're gonna leave everything the way county had it originally. So St. Louis County highways, letting us, you can kind of see it right there. There's a curb cut. There's the other curb cut. And then here's the curb cut on the other road right here. Got parking, enclosed dumpster, additional parking, handicap accessibility. That's the building itself. That's that guardrail that you guys see in there currently. So that kind of gives you an orientation. If I go back to the Google Earth image. So that's the orientation of the facility. You know, north being that way. Let me see here. That, see, that's that's Lewis and Clark, Lusher and Redmond. So you can see that's existing, that's existing. And the building will go right where the old one was, except it'll go deeper into it to make it a little bit larger facility. But that's generally where the building's gonna sit. And all this will be cleaned up and guardrail will be removed and all of this will be put back in place.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
I have.
Bill? Who has a question? How many, are we, are we looking at seven days a week?
Yes.
Okay, how many parking spaces?
Forty-one. Sorry, I should have known that, but we just recently.
No, no, that, that's okay. What about signage?
The signage will only be over the doorway at the building. It's kind of was shown there. We just did a generic ABC, but it'll actually be ASM.
Okay.
There was no street signage, there are no high rise signs, no, nothing like that.
You have any other locations in St. Louis?
Yeah, the Spanish Lake Market nineteen, eleven ninety-three, Laramore Road.
Okay.
Wayne, I have some questions when you finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I was trying to ask a while ago, but you got, you covered three of those. Are you gonna be selling liquor there?
Liquor's not our main focus. We'd like to get a liquor license, but that's really not, we don't want to be a liquor store. That's not our thing.
But is that yes or no?
Yes, if we can get a liquor license.
Oh, okay, thank you. And also, did you purchase some of the land behind where the old service station used to sit that was a drop off? Into the Regent Bank area? There was a drive through Regent's Bank back there. Did you purchase some of that land?
No.
Okay, so are you gonna have enough room to have forty-five parking spots out front?
Forty-one, yeah, that's what we put the planning commission on to develop the site.
Okay, now there's a lot of traffic going down Lusher and they travel pretty fast, especially when that light is there. There's a light there. And there's a curb cut there. You're talking about using that curb cut, right?
Yeah, those are existing curb cuts and talking about St. Louis.
One of my concerns is if people are protruding out there into that Lusher and people trying to make that light, it could be a problem.
It was an existing facility prior to, so we're not changing it.
Yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't that congested there either at that time. That was years ago. It wasn't that heavily trafficked at that time. You, you plan on operating eight to eight? How many days of the week?
Seven.
Seven days a week? Okay. All right, that's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Do you none? Now, you wanna go ahead and take speakers?
Yes, so we will start with give me one second, please. We'll start with Bracey Gibson, I believe. Tracy, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yes, thank you, Gibson. I was trying to think about self-decision regarding this establishment. And so as it's being presented here today, I would not be opposed. I know there are several residents in the area that are opposed to a liquor store being in that area. And that's what has been basically going around the community, that somebody wants to build a liquor store on that corner, and I am definitely opposed to that. Now, as it's presented here today, I am familiar with the Spanish Lake Market. And I believe that has added value to that community as far as servicing that community. But I would definitely be opposed to a liquor store. So as far as getting a liquor license, I'm opposed to that. If you're presenting it as being a grocery store, a market, I have no opposition to that. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Tyrone Shockey. Tyrone, you are unmuted.
Uh, yeah, thank you for letting me join the conversation. I'm gonna, I'm gonna piggyback off what the young lady just said. If they wanna liquor store in any manner, definitely disagree.
Disagree.
So if I got questions. You said you will partner with the community if this does go through, but if it's a liquor store, please, commission, don't let it go through. But you said if it, if it goes through without the liquor store, you say you're a partner with the community. What type of things will you do and what do you guarantee? Or is this gonna be just something for you to get in in the beginning, they should do something, and then do nothing? What type of things will you be doing?
Okay, we'll, we'll let them respond to that when they come back up.
Other than just telling me we're gonna help the community, is this gonna be a long-term partnership? The whole time you there?
We'll let them respond on rebuttal.
Okay.
Okay, next is Daniel Lee. Daniel, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you for, for having the meeting, for starters. Yes, I'm opposed to it. And I'll tell you why. Everybody comes up with the so-called song and dance routine of what they present right now. In the meanwhile, they'll still be trying to get a liquor license, which in essence is gonna cause a problem in the community. I need something to uplift the community, not bring it down. That's what I'm looking for. And I hear all of this. A lot of, a lot of organizations say the same old thing. But a few months later, what do you have? You got a lineup outside. You got all kinds of problems that are brought to the community. So you have a couple of other stores. I could go past them. I'm not impressed. Because you do have a volume and you have some people that lottery, a lot of basically sit outside the building sometimes. Now, the liquor, I know that's gonna be a problem too. Right there on that corner, that is a problem based on how it's constructed as well as the traffic, the volume of traffic that comes through there. So I'm completely against it because it, it'll bring down. You gonna bring something here, bring something to uplift the community, that is not gonna uplift the community. Thank you.
Okay, next will be Kimberly, who called in with her phone for audio. Kimberly, you are unmuted.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Kimberly Graham. I am opposed to it as well. Again, I believe, first of all, the location you said, six thousand square foot, that's really not a big area for a grocery store, in my opinion, based on we're off of a highway, which would draw criminal activity. When the QuickTrip was there, we had a lot of people running in and out. Our yards are not fenced in. We don't want that in this community. It, the store, we have Family Dollar. We have other stores that we can go to. This community over here still have elderly people. They're not walking to a store. I'm opposed to anything that has to do with liquor. Liquor draws activity. And yes, your presentation was good and it's gonna be a grocery store, but again, like Daniel said, after all the dust settled and you're in, and people think this is a good thing, it's not, because then you're gonna apply for your liquor license. The hours are from eight to eight. What are you doing for the community? These young people in this community need jobs. They need education, they need tutoring. They don't need, we don't need another grocery store right now. Also, it is very quiet and peaceful over here. You're talking about traffic coming down the highway, three sixty-seven to Lusher, to that corner. That's traffic. Years ago, yes, it was all of that before, but right now we have a mass amount of people speeding through this area. We're setting ourselves up if we go along with this. I'm opposed to any liquor. I'm opposed to the store being there itself. Let's bring value, again, like Daniel said, to our community. We don't want unwanted traffic. We already have enough. The parking is not enough for everybody to get in and out. When you have your delivery, how are your trucks gonna get in and out? So I'm opposed as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll go to Andrea Moore. Andrea, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Uh, yes, thanks again. And as I stated before, I am a resident of Spanish Lake and my child attends Trinity Catholic. I've lived in North County pretty much all my life. I'm not a fan of having a liquor store or selling liquor. We do not, North County does not need another easy convenient store. And I hope that the other one do not come on Malleys Market, but with this one, the proposal looks great. They, they do need another convenient supermarket per se. Snooks and Aldi's is good, but something that you can grab and go that's affordable. There's jobs needed, giving back, things like that. So what is your proposed date of opening? I'm assuming it'll be twenty-one toward the end of the year and twenty-one. But North County needs something that will bring better business relationships, community, and not just for good practice, making money, you know, giving back is great. Or are you gonna keep the supermarket clean? That's a big, big thing, because once someone comes in, a lot of times they don't keep up the outside. Trash, debris, loitering, it's not a good look. It brings down our property value. We need businesses that's gonna come in and revitalize North County. It is a great neighborhood. I live in a nice neighborhood. Then you might have two blocks over or somewhere else and they don't keep their property up or businesses don't keep their, their outside up. And there's several on Bell Fountain that needs to like cease, but anyway, what are your plans for is keeping your property up, creating jobs, and giving back to the community? I'm for it if that's what is gonna keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll go to Angela Pinecks. Angela, you are unmuted.
Hi, Mr. and Selma, I'm sorry. So you can see the perception that a convenience store has in the community, especially North County. You, you started your presentation saying that you didn't know where we got the term commu, uh, convenience store from, and it's really on all of your materials here, even on the site plan. So the perception that we have of a convenience store is that there are, that it is a liquor and tobacco outlet. While we understand that even visiting other convenience stores, there are other items in these stores. The, the issue is the liquor and the tobacco. And we have fourteen to fifteen outlets for liquor and tobacco in Spanish Lake already. And as a representative of the Community Development Corporation, and we also have the Spanish Lake Community Association on the line, when you talk about giving back to the community, as we had, had conversations with other developers, no one from your camp sought to speak to the organizations that represent, the community organizations that represent other folks that you have here on the line. So those were my comments. I am opposed to another, well, we are opposed to another outlet that will sell liquor and tobacco, especially if it is a great percentage of what you now are calling a grocery store. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Iris. Iris, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening, everyone. I do have a few questions here. That space that they are talking about, I was wondering if that was, to my memory, I do remember the Regent's Bank that's set behind that old service station, but is that gonna be just from that old service station corner? Is it gonna take up where the car dealer or auto shop at and the eyeglass center, or is it just that old corner of the gas station? Because I'm trying to get a, because there's a lot of land back there, so I'm just trying to see exactly how much space are we talking about visually and mentally, so nothing is gonna happen to that QuickTrip side, right? It's still gonna be vacant. Is that correct?
Yes, it's just the old gas station site on the corner, not the bank, not the QuickTrip.
Okay, so would that, would that be one way in, one way out? Or is it gonna be accessed from Lusher and Redmond?
The applicant can answer those questions, but I don't believe it's one way in and out, no.
Do you have any other comments, Iris?
Oh, well, yeah, I did, I'm sorry. And then also, I was wondering about the trucks for the merchandise. Would they be making drops or deliveries during business hours only, or is this after hours? Because I agree, again, I agree with the residents in that neighborhood, because my child attends the school down the street, Trinity Catholic High School, and with that planned proposal, it sits in the, it's surrounded by schools. You have traffic during the school hours. I know we all hope to, you know, see our kids in school and contact learning soon here. But with that being said, we're, it's school surrounding, so you, you, you have children. So at the hours of eight to eight, that's either going, coming, even after hours. So by this, this grocery store, convenience store, however you term it, sitting there. I'm just really trying to figure out what is the real purpose behind this store as far as like, has a survey been done to see what's needed in that area, because even with six thousand square, square feet again, I mean, are we really reaching the masses with this? So that's one thing I'm concerned about, like the trucks, how big of a trucks? Are we talking about vans? Are we talking about eighteen wheelers? Interstate commerce, I mean, what time of hours, those type of things I'm, I'm looking at. And then also with the open land, as far as the residents, like the fencing, that is one of my main concerns too, because we have a bus line, metro bus line that comes up and down Redmond and, you know, that's a lot of movement in that very small congested area. So again, I know we wanna serve the community, but I don't really think that this is a good idea for this, you know, particular area because of the small congested space. And again, it, it poses a problem, even when you all are closing, when they close at night. You have residents that are older, that have been in that area for decades. And you have a lot of movement on foot. When the QuickTrip was there, we had several people breaking away, running off in our yards. They were looking people breaking away, running off in our yards. They were looking for people. So I'm concerned about the crime. I'm concerned about the, the, you know, the pretty much just people walking in and out of the residence and on the property and everything like that. So I, I, those are my main concerns. And as of now, I do oppose it, because I, I don't see the big picture in what was shown through the display or the PowerPoint.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll go to Sandra Northern. Sandra, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hello, as you mentioned, my name is Sandra Northern and I'm a resident of North County, and I live actually around the corner from this proposed location. And I will say that immediately, my thought was, again, the whole idea of what everyone has said is a convenience store. One of the ladies mentioned it greatly, or made a great point to say that it is on your plans to say a convenience store. And so I will say you mentioned things like high-end, well-lit, security, the police. All of these things, they sound really good. They sound great, as a matter of fact. But I'm concerned that your presentation is deceptive. I feel like if you would have been forthright, no, we still wouldn't go for it, but we'd appreciate you being upfront and honest with us and saying what you propose to do. Anytime that you want to apply for a full C2 permitted use, it includes the use of alcohol. That means that you can sell alcohol. We don't need a convenience store. There's convenience stores within one mile of every location around here. We can go to Bell Fountain, we can go straight up the street to Walgreens, Family Dollar, Dollar Tree, the Dollar General to, like I said, Walgreens, QuickTrip is right up the street. We don't need a convenience store. They're right around the corner on the next street. And then so also, the issues with the traffic, I'm glad Mr. Ballot brought it up. If you had done a survey, you would see that there were numerous traffic accidents on that corner when QuickTrip was there. While school is in location, all of these things going on, there's been numerous traffic accidents. We do not need a location that is crammed on the corner, cannot support traffic in and out, and is there just to present themselves as a grocery store when they're not actually a grocery store. The other thing is, I wanted to know, there is an area behind that location that you purchased that it has just recently been purchased also. So my concern is that there's also something else going on, that there's more area to be purchased or to be used later on and combined with something else that's already in the works. And also, the, is this the same owner, by this card, Amin Alshani, who also owned the Uptown Market? And the place that was shut down for all these different things that went on in the area? Like I said, I don't, I don't care about the police force being next across the street. I'm glad they are. But that does not prevent people doing what they want to do and hanging out all sorts of hours and bringing our community down and, and taking the value down in this community. Put the convenience store in another location. Go put it in another community, not over here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Susan Florrick. Susan, do you have comments on this petition?
Oh, hi, good evening. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. And I think, I think some of my questions that I jotted down during the presentation have already been addressed. The shipping and receiving hours, I think that was brought up. Usually shipping is, or receiving is early hours, which could conflict with school buses. The visual fatigue, you had, you talked about landscaping quite a bit, and that's great. Are you going to leave the trees that are currently there? Are you planning to cut those? Are you going to have trees in the landscaping to try to help with that? Committing to property cleanup and litter abatement. And I don't, from listening to the other comments, you know, are you committing to profitability with this location even without liquor sales if you do not get that approved? So those are just my, my questions that came up. Thanks so much.
Okay, thank you. And there was one question in the chat asking, you indicated Mr. Anselmo about the owner owning the Spanish Lake Market. The question was what other markets? But it looks like those are the last speakers for this petition. And if you have spoken, if you could unraise your hand, that'd be appreciated. Thank you. But that's all the comment for this one, Mr. Hilsinger. Oh. I don't see Mr. Hilsinger.
I'm glad we lost him.
Oh, I hear it.
As he tries to join, as he tries, tries to talk back in, Mr. Anselmo, you, you can have your rebuttal period right now to answer all the comments and questions that were raised. Need to unmute yourself, sir. Mel, can you unmute him?
Here we go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm unmuted. I mean, I guess the biggest thing is we're not a liquor store. It's not our intent. We don't want to be a liquor store. I understand there's a lot of liquor stores in the area that you guys aren't excited about. We don't want to be those people. We want to come into the community. We want to build a nice, clean facility. We want to maintain the facility. We want to follow the guidelines that are set forth by the zoning commission for St. Louis County and uplift the area. You know, right now, it's on that corner that's going to, you know, look fresh, look new, bring something nice into that area, and that's our goal. As far as partnering with the community, we, we're hoping that people will reach out to us and we'll reach out to them. And when the local soccer team needs uniforms or the school wants to take a trip, we want to participate and we have participated. We give away food and turkeys at Thanksgiving and bikes at Christmas. We've sent church groups on retreats. Unfortunately, the group that we had been working with, and there was a lady there that I guess we didn't find her organization and speak with her. We apologize, but we did get community folks to reach out, and I guess they're having difficulty getting into the, to, to make their comments, which is unfortunate. But trust individually, partnering with the community, again, all we can do is give you our word and put our, our past performance as our, as our guarantee. It helps to be part of the community. We don't want to have a negative relationship with the community. So we, we want to participate in food drives, want to participate in sporting, helping sporting, local, local boys groups, girls groups, whatever we need to do there. The loitering, that's why we're doing eight to eight. We don't want to, we don't want to be there at night. We don't want to bring that, anything at night that's going to be negative. We want to make sure that it's a safe, clean community. We're going to have onsite security. We're going to have full 24-hour CCTV scanning the entire site. We're not looking to be at six in the morning until midnight with a bunch of nefarious people running around. That's, that's not who we want to be. We want the local residents to feel safe coming in to pick up milk or grab some cheese or get some pork chops or whatever they need for the night. Unlike a Family Dollar or a Dollar General, that's what we're offering. That's why we think we can be profitable there, because we're bringing fresh products to the market. And it's not canned goods and, and, and just canned goods and those items. It's fresh meat, fresh produce, fresh dairy, things that you need. A lot of talk about the schools and the kids going to school. You're going to need to grab something for the kid for lunch or whatever you need to do on the way home. We're there for you. The profitability is based on the grocery store, not a liquor store. That's not our goal. Other folks are trying to buy property around us, around that area. As you well know, to build liquor stores, that's not who we want to be. We hope to address the opening. We're looking at probably July 2021. And we would hire probably eight to 10 local people work at the location. And again, that's because the hours are eight to eight. See, well-maintained, and we showed the photographs. We're going to put some money in the location, so we don't want to spend a million dollars building something beautiful and then let it deteriorate. So that's our whole plan, is to come in with a Class A facility, do a Class A job, and be something that the neighborhood is going to be proud of and that we're going to be proud of. And then we're going to take that concept to other communities as well and say, look, we don't, you know, we can be this to you, not the negative, nefarious liquor store, people running crazy and all the problems that you've all talked about. The QuickTrip had no fencing around it. We're going to have a complete privacy vinyl fence all the way around the property. That way you don't have any, any kind of, anything going on like that. It's going to be, like I said, we're going to have onsite security. We're going to have vinyl fence. So hopefully, I'm talking a little quick because I only get five minutes. I want to cover everybody here. We did not buy any additional property. Somebody said something about there's, there's a game plan or something in the works. That's not us. We didn't buy anything. We own the corner. We're going to build on the corner. We're going to maintain the corner. And that's going to be our deal. If anybody's buying anything around us, we're not aware of it, and we have no plans to expand or do anything, anything else. The deliveries, deliveries are not typically that early. They're, they're going to run all day between, say, eight and two or three. But you know, the Frito truck comes in, the Little Debbie truck comes in, the meat guy comes in. There's going to be vans, straight trucks, and some what they call bobtails, which are short tractor trailers. They're not interstate by any way. They're not, you know, 45 or 53 footers. They're the small ones that you see running around prairie farms and that kind of thing. And those deliveries will take place throughout the day. They usually stop by two or three, and they usually don't start until, well, they won't start until eight, which most of the kids will be in school by then or on their way. So and we can work with the vendors to tell them, you know, don't come on those hours. School starts at 8:30. Please start your deliveries after that. So you know, if you guys can give us a list of things you want us to do, we're willing to do those things. And we're also willing to abide by what planning and zoning and the rest of St. Louis County infrastructure puts in place for us to follow. You know, if the other stores aren't maintaining the property, they should be. There's rules and laws against it. And you, you know, and I encourage you to contact your, your local politicians and officials and, and take care of that problem. But because we don't want, we don't, we're going to hold that to ourselves to that own standard, and they should too. So whatever gets put into the planning and zoning and the condition for the use, you know, we're willing to abide by, and we're going, you know, and that's all we can do is, is say, look, we're presenting a beautiful building with the right kind of product mix for the community, and we're going to do it the right way. And I think that answers most of the questions unless there's something that Gail, if there's anything I missed. And loitering will definitely be discouraged. We're not going to allow that. That's not going to happen. We're not going to be that, that store.
Do you, do you own other, other locations besides the one you, you commented, or I think the question was Spanish?
Spanish Lake Market at 11937 Laramore Road is the only one he owns, besides this one that we're getting ready to build.
Gail, there was one that the lady asked, would he be willing to forego his profit not getting a liquor license?
No, that was, the question actually was, would, would we base, would we still operate without a liquor license? Would we?
That's what, that's what I said.
And yes, but forego our profits? No, we're not going to forego all of our profits on the facility.
So then you get a liquor license, what you're saying?
No. No, the question, the, 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 I'm sorry, I misunderstand what you're saying. The, the, we are going to be profitable with or without liquor.
Okay, so are you willing to open the store without getting a liquor license?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you're not just saying it because we're asking tonight, that's?
No, I mean, I can't, you know, everybody, you know, again, you know, I can't, unless County, St. Louis County gives me a liquor license, I can't just go get a liquor license. So you, you control that. You let me build a market, and then you control that.
No, I was just trying to ask, answer the latest question. She asked that question. The other thing on, on the shipping, you hear that a lot. They, they mention shipping and delivery. And you have these guys coming in, you say you have 41 spaces. It seems like that's still going to be a little tight down that corner.
Well, they don't all come at one time. We, you know, we space them out.
You're going to, you're going to have them scheduled so they don't show up at the same time?
Well, yeah, we, we typically do that, William, because we, if they all show up at one time, we, none of our customers can get in. So you know, we
Two or three guys come in with big trucks, and then you got the people trying to get off that highway. And like she said, there was a lot of accidents down there.
Yeah, we're not going to allow that, because that's going to block our traffic and block our customers from coming in and buying from us. That would be detrimental to our own business. So we speak to our vendors and say, no, you know, you know, you know, this, this is the largest truck you can bring on our site, and these are the hours of operation, and we need to get it, get it into a pattern where, you know, Little Debbie showing up at eight, Little Frito-Lay showing up at 8:45, and the, the bread company is showing up at 10:30. And that's how kind of how we do things, just like if you look at the Spanish Lake Market, the same thing. And, and that's not really a problem there.
Okay. Also, they mentioned the kids in the school. Trinity is on one leg of that Redmond. Then you got Hazelwood East on the other end. And those kids walking past the store, how are you going to deal with those? They, they, they got, kids like to hang out. I've seen them go into QuickTrip a lot.
Yeah, we're not, we don't allow that. We're not, we don't operate, you know, QuickTrip's gone, and they're gone for a reason, and we don't allow that. You know, we're going to have, we're going to have onsite security. An individual is responsible. We're walking around out there, keeping it organized, keeping it clean, keeping it safe. And they're running off to kids. If there's kids there during school hours, they're going to be encouraged to leave. That, you know, that's, we don't want that vibe that everyone seems tense about. That's what we're trying to do, is say, hey, this can be done, and it can be done in a better way than it's being done now.
Okay. That's it, Gail.
Gail, I think I'm back. I'm not sure what farm I'm back in.
Okay, well, we just finished the rebuttal, Wayne, so you can close it out for this particular petition if you'd like.
Okay, nothing else. We'll go on to PC 20-20, Our Lady's Inn, which is your question or a amended, amended conditional use permit in the R5, 6,000 square foot Residence District Proposed Use Group Living Facility.
Okay, so this request is located north of Olive Boulevard. Looking at the aerial here, 270 is a little ways to the east. It's north of Olive Boulevard on the east side of Timber Run Drive. Here's the land use map. You can see the site shaded in gray. It's currently vacant, partially wooded. To the south is the Good Shepherd School for Children on the same parcel, and further south on the same parcel is the youth bridge and Haven House facility. And then to the west, to the north, there are single-family residences. There's a multiple-family apartment complex to the east, and then various commercial uses along Olive Boulevard. So the site photos I'm going to show first, I'll kind of move through the site following those arrows, and then there will be one photo a little bit east of the site. So here, we're looking south, southeast along Timber Run Drive. The wooded area you see is the site. And then on the north side of the site, there is the Ameren, an Ameren easement, so that's the power lines you see in several of the photos. This is also looking south along, along Timber Run Drive. Cypress Way Drive is to the right here, and the site is to the left. This is looking back north along Timber Run Drive, so the site is on the right side of the photo. This is looking west from inside the site on the north side by the Ameren easement. You can see a house sort of on the horizon. That house is, fronts Timber Run Drive. This is also along the Ameren easement, along the northeastern property line, looking southeast. Then moving into the site a little bit, looking east along the northeastern property line. Now moving into the site, this is sort of a higher elevation, but most of the site is at this elevation. You can see it's sort of wooded, but there is a clearing sort of in the middle. This is inside the site looking south. That building is the Good Shepherd School for Children. There's the school again, and it's parking looking south, southeast. And this is looking northeast into the site closer. The picture is taken a little closer to Timber Run Drive. And then this is looking west from inside the site towards Timber Run Drive. So you can see there where the single-family residences, residences are on the west side of Timber Run Drive. And then this photo, you can see from the sort of inset, we've gone over to Whispering Pines Drive. And this is looking northwest sort of through the Ameren easement and the single-family residence towards the site. So you can see this sort of wooded area that separates the site from there. So now, we'll move to the petitioner's presentation. Kate or George, who should I make the presenter?
Mel, if you could make George Stockton the presenter, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, George, I've made you the presenter, so you can share your presentation.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. For the record, Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission, for the record, my name is George Stock, and I'm with Stock and Associates Consulting Engineers, and I'm here this evening on behalf of Our Ladies Inn. Um, we have an entire team on the phone, uh, we have Ms. Peggy Forrest, who's the Chief Executive Officer, Ms. Megan Foster, Chief Operations Officer, and I believe we have two gentlemen from Jemma, the project architect, that is John Mueller, and John McKee, and then as Mel mentioned, uh, Kate Stock, Gito, with Stock and Associates is on as well. And, and what I thought we would do, um, Mel, you did an excellent job of, of this, going over the site, and that's very helpful, we have some slides that I'll be able to move quickly. But our request is really for a conditional use permit, um, and that conditional use permit, uh, is for the proposed use of group living facility. Uh, this site previously had a conditional use permit, uh, number nine-fourty-eight, uh, for a group living facility, was for the Haven House. Uh, that project never moved forward and, and did not develop, and as a result, uh, that conditional use permit expired on May nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Um, I think before we get into the particulars of the project, it would be good for Ms. Peggy Forrest, the Chief Executive Officer, to speak, and we have some slides for her to speak from. Mel, is it possible to, um, unmute her, and we'll go through her slides, and I'll come back in a moment?
Sure, I've unmuted you, Peggy.
Thank you so much. Um, yes, I just thought I would just give a quick overview of what we do so that, um, any interested parties would have a clear understanding of what we're proposing and not just the, the building itself. Um, so we are a, a non-for-profit agency, um, we are a residential maternity home. Um, what we are not, um, is substance abuse treatment center. We are not a domestic violence shelter, and we are not a mental health facility. Um, what we do is care for unhoused pregnant women and their children. Um, in a residential setting, we try and make the facility as much, um, home-like as possible. We call it, we call it our home. Um, we provide for their basic needs, um, housing, food, clothing. Um, our mission is to provide, um, and facilitate healthy pregnancies, uh, with pre and postnatal care nursing support, we have a nurse on staff, um, and we provide a lot of education, um, on parenting and, um, pregnancy. We support women, um, with a counselor who have had, uh, trauma in their past. Um, some of the women that come to us are, um, uh, working a sober lifestyle, and we support them in that. Um, if they are, um, not working a sober living lifestyle, then we do not allow them to stay with us. Um, and, um, some of the women come to us, um, with depression, some anxiety, and, um, we, of course, work with them to work those issues, um, postpartum depression is, is accompanied, um, so we work this depression. And then we also work with women in achieving their educational employment goals, um, because the ultimate goal is to help them achieve, um, stable housing for themselves and their families. Um, we serve women who are eighteen years and old, not serve, um, young teenagers. Uh, they are allowed to have, um, any dependent children that they have with them, um, they can bring them to the facility. Um, these pregnant women are currently unhoused, and they are a variety of single, widowed, and married but abandoned women. And in the last, um, thirty-nine years, we've served more than seven thousand of these, um, women needing support. And just to give you an idea of what the need is in St. Louis County, uh, we St. Louis City, and one in St. Charles County, um, but in the last five years, at those two facility, we have served a hundred and sixty-three St. Louis County women, and there are one hundred and eighty-one dependent children. Um, they come from all zip codes in St. Louis County, there's not, um, you know, uh, St. Louis County zip code that we have not served someone from. And we just believe that we need to support, um, all our, of our unhoused neighbors, and, um, that is, you know, that is the mission that we carry on, and that's what we are attempting to do here, is to continue to meet the need that is being brought to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. So a little bit more about the site, and again, Mel did, did a very nice job, but the site that, uh, we're proposing this conditional use permit is a part of the youth bridge property, which extends um, all the way to the south to Olive Boulevard. Uh, we're the, um, northern triangle, approximately four-point-five-one-nine acres, there's some distinct features, um, of this property. One of them in particular is the Ameren Transmission, uh, that wraps, wraps the property on the east and the north, and by the way, north is right on this drawing. Um, and then along our west is the Timber Run, uh, street, which intersects Olive Street Road at a signalized intersection, uh, and serves the residential neighborhoods of Timber Run, which do link within the Whispering Hill subdivision as you continue. Um, immediately to our south is the Good Shepherd, uh, preschool, which is shown here. Um, also, uh, the site, as you can see, there are tree masses around the perimeter of the site, and there is an open area, uh, as Mel had mentioned on the previous slide. Um, I, I don't need to spend a lot of time because Mel did a nice job, but these are just photographs around the site that showed the manicured yard, shows the trees around the perimeter, and it shows the, um, adjoining streets and the residential homes that are to the west of the property. So this, from a site planning standpoint, um, this shows the location of the proposed building, the footprint of the building is just about sixteen thousand square feet, a little bit less. It does have a partial basement under five thousand square feet. Uh, you'll notice that the building is located, um, to the east of Timber Run, uh, approximately a hundred and ninety feet. Um, and then the parking, which is in front of the building, is approximately a hundred and five feet, so this gives you a good idea of the green space and buffer that would be provided, uh, in particularly adjacent to those four residential homes that are to the west, and puts it in proportion to the Good Shepherd Building that you can see that we further back. Um, we have a single point of, of entry, which is along the northern side of the building, it's aligned with, uh, Cypress Way Drive, uh, such that the, the, the drive is aligned with the, uh, versus anybody's private driveway. So a little bit about, uh, the site plan, a little bit greater deal, or, uh, greater detail, um, there's a number of stormwater improvements that would be made. Uh, the intent is to develop this property generally where that open, clear area is in the ridge of the property. Uh, we intend to lower that, uh, ridge by about six feet down to the, uh, finished floor of the building. And then stormwater from this site would run to three different, uh, stormwater management basins, they'd be, they're called bio-retention, um, and/or rain gardens, which would be located to intercept any water that comes from the roof of the parking lots. Um, the purpose of the bio-retention is to improve the water quality, um, induce, um, uh, infiltration, transpiration, uh, to create volume reduction. And then those, those bio-basins would discharge to, um, something that's, uh, sometimes unique, but in this area, um, there are several, uh, sinkholes, so there are active sinkholes, um, which not only serve this property, but the properties abutting us, so the stormwater would be attenuated, it would be cleaned, and then it would be discharged. Um, as I mentioned before, you can see the drive coming into the site is aligned with, uh, Cypress Way Drive. Uh, we have a total of thirty-four parking spaces provided, and that's based on the code, which, there's a breakdown between group living and the general office, um, which require thirty-four spaces, and there's thirty-four provided, of which four ADA. A little bit about Our Ladies Inn staffing, um, is shown on the slide, so the CEO, CFO, and COO, and Chief Program Officer, um, will work at the facility however they rotate, they're not all there during the same time. Um, there will be several administrative personnel, three full-time and four part-time, including human resources, finance, and development. Um, there's also, uh, employed a complement of program staff, both full-time and part-time, two to three case managers, a nurse, counselor, cook, program director, facilities manager, and approximately six support staff. Uh, Our Ladies Inn is staffed twenty-four to seven, and, um, and there are some staff work, uh, daytime shifts while others work evenings and overnight shifts. Uh, a little bit more about the site, so, um, behind the building, and, and not in great detail, are some open spaces, gathering spaces, uh, gardens, uh, play areas, a walking trail, and we'll move a, a little bit further into a, a landscape plan, they'll show up in a little bit larger. Um, the site, uh, as a requirement of the conditional use permit in the hearing, uh, we're required to cut two site sections through here, uh, one in the east-west direction, one in the north-south, and what you see in red is, is the topography of the property, and as I mentioned, I mean, I'll just start, uh, on section AA, and you'll see that the building is lower than that high point of the site, as I mentioned, approximately six feet lower, you also see the partial basement, um, located within there. And then section BB, which is the, uh, east-west, um, going from left to right is from Timber Run through the building, and then to the backside. Um, from a landscape standpoint, I think one of the things that I didn't mention when we looked at the colored site plan is there's still remaining of this property about three and a half acres of green space, so approximately seventy-six percent of the site is left to green. Um, this, this plan shows, uh, the intended landscaping, um, along the front of the parking lot, uh, obviously creating some landscaping to obscure the parking, again, we have that substantial distance or green area from Timber Run, um, and then landscaping also, uh, around the perimeter and the back of the property. And as you look at this slide, um, you see some of those amenities, which is in the back, uh, which consist of a outdoor child play area, a little walking trail. Um, there's some private quiet outdoor areas, garden, a grotto, and then there's, uh, the raised garden beds, and then an outdoor covered terrace, but again, all of this, um, none of these outdoor activities are adjacent to the resident properties, um, particularly from the west, be, the building is screening or buffering them from Timber Run. And then from the east, there's the tree line that would be maintained, and then you have the Ameren Transmission before you get to the next, uh, residential subdivision. As I mentioned, the architects are on the phone, um, as well, and be able to answer any questions, uh, but the following slides are really the rendering, this is a view, basically looking at the front door as if you were standing in the parking lot, uh, looking back to the east. This is a slide, a little bit further north on the parking lot, looking back at the building, uh, looking in a, uh, southeasterly direction. And then again, um, looking a little bit further from the north, and you see the landscaping, but again, I think what's characteristic of the building is it's a one-story building, um, residential character, uh, to blend in with the neighborhood. Um, so this really concludes our presentation, and as I mentioned, our entire team is here to answer any questions, um, that the commission may have, and/or address any comments that come up from public, thank you.
Okay, thank you, George. Uh, commissioners, any questions? Anyone?
Do seem to have lost Mr. Ballard.
Okay. We have no questions? Okay, um, Melissa, do we have any speakers?
We have several speakers.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and take that?
We will start with Diane. Diane, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. So I am speaking with concern about this project and this, uh, proposal. This is a residential subdivision, and to my knowledge, Our Ladies Inn does not have any other facilities in the middle of a residential subdivision like they are proposing in this instance. Um, I also want to talk to the traffic, this is one-way each direction, it is a residential street that they are gonna be bringing more traffic in to their facility with, it is not a three-lane street where there's a center lane. Um, I worry about the traffic with what kind of deliveries are they gonna be getting? When do they come? This is again a twenty-four-seven facility. Um, we have kids that play on this street on Timber Run, again, with deliveries, traffic, traffic. Again, think of your residential subdivision, try to consider, would you want this next door to you? Because this is not a commercial street. Um, wildlife lives in this section of area, I can tell you this has been vacant for years and these animals, and I get it, that might not be the top priority, but they're already strained for space, this is where baby deer are, every single spring, you get multiple deer that cross this road, they have a path along that, um, area right there, because you say that it's not wooded, but there is a lot of woods and brush where they bed down all the time, and they are just going to be left wandering into the subdivision and lost, or else they're gonna be pushed up to Olive Street to get hit by cars. I also want you to consider the elementary and the, um, schools, you just said that they've had, you've housed, uh, St. Louis County residents, a hundred and eighty-one children. Those one hundred and eighty-one children are already, are gonna put a strain on Ross Elementary that's already having to take overflow from McKelvey Elementary, because McKelvey is way above capacity, and Ross Elementary is already struggling at the Parkway Elementary School, and is not a top-rated school, and they are trying to get things back in order in order to be able to teach the kids they have. So you're just gonna put more strain on kids, on, on the school, with kids that are potentially gonna need more services because of the situation that they're in. Um, you talked about your stormwater drain systems that you're gonna install, that I'm sure is gonna keep your pop property great, but you're putting in a lot of concrete and a lot of waves that nothing is going to be able to soak in water, and again, your property and your basement probably won't leak, but you're gonna take away, and there will be downward overflow from whatever you do. And unless you're going to take accountability for any future now basement problems that people in the subdivision have never had, I think that should be considered as well for you to take responsibility for that. You're gonna have signs and lights, all the residents that live here, I'm assuming those lights for your parking lot will be on twenty-four-seven since you're a twenty-four-seven facility, or are you gonna turn those off at night so residents don't have big, huge lights glaring into their living rooms or their bedrooms when they're trying to go to bed? Um, uh, I don't know. I also wanted to talk about that this is going in this location versus there's all sorts of emptying other locations along Olive Street, and I feel like this is trying to be, you know, brought into this location because St. Louis, St. Louis County and St. Louis County has lower taxes, and so it's trying to happen there. Peggy also said that this is not for domestic abuse, that this is a domestic abuse house, but a lot of these women are now homeless because they're fleeing domestic abuse situations. So what's happening when their partner, their husband, their spouse, whoever, wants to come to this facility? What sort of domestic disturbances are gonna be happening there? And I would be very surprised if you tell me that that never happens, because likely it happens. Um, you also talked about the sober lifestyle, well, what happens if they have a relapse? Is it one and done? Do they leave that night? What do you do with them? Is this no three strikes, no four strikes, you know, how do you handle that? Do you really kick them out that night and they're out on the street, and then where do they go from then? Um, I also wanted to talk about, you know, uh, the timing that this is happening. I think it's a very, very unfair and inconsiderate to our neighborhood that you're doing this during COVID. It was very difficult to get the word out and really actually talk to people about what's going on because of the timing of this situation for this conditional use permit. I feel like you're sneaking it in at this time, trying to get one over on us residents. And I think it's very unfair and very inconsiderate to our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Will be Nancy Litzow. Nancy, you are unmuted.
Hi, um, I'm just, I'm the president of Good Shepherd School for Children, which will, uh, Our Ladies Inn will butt up next to. This looks a little closer than when we had previously, uh, spoken in favor when Haven House was, uh, had its, uh, plans in place, and at that time, they were going to give us a berm with topped with a lot of evergreens. I don't see in here, nor did I see in the presentation, I saw some really nice tall grasses, I saw some trees, but, uh, this, some of this concrete is, is fairly close to the edge of our playgrounds. I know that our playgrounds have evergreens and trees around them to shade our playgrounds from the street so that it doesn't, uh, our playgrounds don't take away from theirs. I would love to see more, uh, evergreens in between us and Our Ladies Inn on that particular side.
Okay, thank you. Next will be Kevin Lit.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, yeah, I've got several points, um, I'll, I'm gonna start. All right. Yeah, I've got several points. I'm going to start off with a positive alternative. Right now, there's an empty building right up on Olive, just on the other side, right, really on Olive. It's at, it's the old Haven House. It's at 12685 Olive Boulevard. The building's already there. People can move in right away. It's closer to, if women want to work, or if they need to go shopping or anything, it's much closer to shopping opportunities. It would be much more convenient for those residents that are going and staying there. There are a lot of concerns about what is being brought up. Number one, I would say, and that's, this is not to be disrespectful in any way, but the pictures that were shown, if I were to try to take pictures and make sure to cut out as many houses as possible, that's how I would have taken those pictures. In the one picture that you sent, you showed when you showed down to Whispering Pines, on left-hand side, you can actually see a hammock. That's someone's backyard, right there. You showed one house across the street. There are four, and then there are several others just down that corner. And on the other side of that tree line that looks like it's a full tree line, there's a house immediately next to it. Having that building there is going to significantly increase light pollution that you can't turn off. You can't get away from it. It is going to significantly change the home values for not only the homes around that space, but all of the homes in the community. We have a lot of children in our neighborhood, a lot of children. Many of them ride their bikes all over the place. We don't have sidewalks, which is fine. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have, but adding more traffic to a place where there are already a lot of children is not a great idea. We, people who live in the community, know the children are there. We know to slow down. People who don't know our community, that are going to be coming through from one of any several entrances, aren't going to know that. And that puts our children in significant danger. Right now, they're having pipes worked on just down the street, and it is like almost half a lane to try to get through. We have to weave through just because of the drainage issues that are trying to be fixed. So that's another issue. Like we said earlier, yeah, those sinkholes that you think are going to fill and be fine, might be fine for your location, but all of our houses were built in the 60s. And we have been having issues with flooding in our yards and in our basements and in other areas. Those sinkholes and those different things are not draining properly at all. They're clogged, and it's causing all kinds of issues. And that all started when Morse Building was going up on Olive. That's already been done. We can't do anything about that. But this is just going to add that much more difficulty to all the people. And like was said earlier, if you're planning on paying for all of our repairs and basement stuff, well, maybe we could reconsider that. But I don't think that something that you're interested in is a nonprofit, and it's not really something we're interested in. We'd rather just not have the problems in the first place. And so, let's see, home values, light pollution, and the sinkholes. The sinkholes that are there are growing. Just last year, we had a sinkhole that took down this huge tree on the, over by the apartments, and ripped up the sidewalk, because the sinkholes are growing. So the idea that putting more water into those sinkholes is a great idea makes zero sense to me. It's just eroding more of the ground underneath and behind our houses, and it's just causing way more problems. There's a beautiful facility right up on Olive. I think we would all, as a community, love for you guys to move into that facility. We think that would be great. Honestly, I can't for the life of me understand why you'd want to move into the middle of a community where the residents really don't want you there. And it's not because of your mission. We love your mission. Makes sense. But your location is poorly picked, especially when there's an abandoned facility that can do everything that you want to do, and you could move in tomorrow right up the street.
Thank you.
Next will be Susan Florrick. Susan, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. I want to start with some questions based on the presentation regarding the proposed residence of this proposed building. What is the average length of stay? How long do people stay there? And I know you said that it wasn't the substance abuse or domestic abuse or mental health facility, but you also said that a lot of the residents do have those issues and are working on those things. So it kind of is. And the presentation repeatedly said unhoused. Does that mean homeless? I'm sorry, I'm just not familiar with unhoused.
We'll ask them if...
I'm going to have a whole series of questions. You can answer if you want.
They can reply on rebuttal.
Right, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
For the dependent children, you know, on average, how many children would stay at this facility at one time? And what school would they go to? You said that you have already served 7,000 women. I didn't write down the date. Where have those been served at? I'm just not familiar with the other locations. Where do, where do the residents go from here? After they stay for however long they normally stay, where and when do they go somewhere else? I mean, I'm just not, I think we need more For the, I have kind of inspected the location. Would you be keeping existing trees? What is the buffer area? Are you going to be adding berms and evergreens or trees year-round? I know, I think her name was Nancy Litzow, also said that, you know, there need to be berms around, in between the homes, the single-family residences, and this, if it is approved. The entry, you know, is it possible to shift, to shift the site plans maybe 90 degrees so that the entry is before you even hit the residential subdivision? Because when I looked at the pictures, it looked like the drive entry to the facility is across the street from the driveway of the fourth house. And maybe that was the photo, or maybe it actually is there. So I need that information. Oh, thank you for switching that. I still can't tell though. You talked about the staffing. Would any staff members be actually living in that facility? Normally, nursing, nursing hours, the shift changes, oh, it's changing again. The shift changes at 7:00 AM, 3:00 PM, and 11:00 PM. So there are going to be people coming and going. You know, that's the shift change. So there would be a lot of people coming and going at that time. But really, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You know, when are, are people only admitted during the day? Or do they, can they be admitted, you know, in the middle of the night? You know, I'm imagining that these are some emergency situations. So they could be admitted 24 hours a day, seven days a week. You'll also need a lot of deliveries of food, trash pickup, all those types of things. During what hours will those things be happening? You know, I don't know. You know, where's the bus stop that would be serving these children? You know, there aren't any sidewalks. I know that was mentioned, but where's the bus stop? So I think the concern is preserving the single-family residential character of the neighborhood that this would be directly adjacent to. You know, zoning change to change it from anything other than residential, you know, just putting this facility right up against a subdivision will really change that neighborhood. You know, the traffic increase, the light pollution, the signage. I didn't see anything regarding the signage and the lighting, the loss of the green space and wildlife habitat, the car accidents that happen on the intersection of Olive and Mason Road. You know, there's a Burger King there. There's a kind of a strip mall. I've seen so many accidents right at Olive and Mason. And Olive and Fifi, I don't know if this is correct, but I was told from a friend that the corner of Olive Street and Fifi Road, which this is very close to, has more accidents than any other intersection in St. Louis County. I'm not sure if that is correct, but that's what I've heard more than once. We already have increased traffic due to expansion at the Barnes West Hospital, right across the road from this. You know, I see cafes, cafe seating and playground. You know, people will be out. There's going to be noise generated in this subdivision. You know, if, are these, are the residents going to be people that have already had children, or they're expecting? I think they're expecting, which means that can happen 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Will they be calling, will they be calling ambulances if someone goes into labor at 2:00 in the morning to this facility? You know, these are things that are really going to change that subdivision. And I thought it was interesting, we're talking about the zip codes, because I really don't see a lot of homeless people, if any, in this area. I do see it, you know, downtown St. Louis, you know, midtown St. Louis. But I really just haven't seen it here. And I'm just wondering, what, since you brought up zip codes, you know, what zip code are most of these people at? And wouldn't it make more sense to have it closer to that, to So I think that I probably hit all of my points. I do feel passionately about this in opposition. And thank you all so much for taking the time to listen to my concerns.
Good, thank you.
Okay, next will be Ladonna Applebaum. Ladonna, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Hi, glad to be here to speak on this tonight. I'm actually State Representative Ladonna Applebaum, and I live just down the street on Cypress Way. And I'm really shocked that no one in this development even reached out to me. I know the county councilwoman, Donna Way, told you two. And I know she wasn't lying to me about that, because I've had other developers reach out to me to talk about development in my district and in the near area. So I feel very uncomfortable about that. And I don't know why you wouldn't reach out to me, since I am the state representative of the district. I've got some really strong concerns. First, the flyer is misleading. It says 6,000 square feet, and tonight you said 16,000. My neighbors are extremely concerned. We're, about our property values, about water gushing into our homes, and with traffic and not having the school bus stop. This development, the development itself is not a bad thing, but it doesn't need to be in the space at Timber Run in Cypress Way. I agree with many of my neighbors that there is a building at the corner of Olive and Timber Run that is vacant, and people could move in tomorrow. And we've just got to think about protecting all of our green space. I do want to, I want to mention that I am so proud of my neighbors for organizing and getting the word out and getting flyers to the neighborhood to make sure we know what's happening. Obviously, we don't want this or any type of development. But I hope you listen to all of us carefully tonight. There's over, or close to 150 people that have signed a petition, and we will fight this. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Will be Hada Chu. Hada, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to start with a few contradicting statements that have been made tonight by the developers about this group living facility. One, I know they keep referring it as a unhoused center for pregnant women. It's a homeless shelter. It's on their website listed as a homeless shelter for women in crisis. On the type of clientele and what Ms. Peggy said this facility is not was very misleading and just a really play on words, I guess. She said, "You're not a mental health facility, yet you cater to women who have experienced trauma, depression, and anxiety." She said, "You're not a treatment center, yet you cater to women who live a sober lifestyle," meaning that they have dependency issues and substance abuse issues that they're dealing with. I hate to say this, but any pregnant woman who is unhoused and having all of these issues appears unstable and not someone that we want in our neighborhood around our young children. Several people tonight have mentioned that our kids are on these streets all day. They ride their bikes. They run around. Your driveway is butting up against my children's school bus stop. So that's a huge concern. Our big concern is really safety for our kids, the fact that this is a 24-hour facility. I can see my house in your pictures. So that's a huge concern. The traffic that this is going to bring in is going to pose a huge injury risk for our young children. I think the kids in this neighborhood are between the ages of five and 10, that again, run on the street all day long. And to kind of touch on what other people have said, there's huge water plot problems here. Is this facility guaranteeing that this water problem is going to be solved? Then if our basements flood or our yards flood, can we count on you to financially support us and replace our damaged stuff? Again, the flyer was misleading. It says 6,000 square foot residence. You mentioned 16,000 square feet. That's a huge difference. You have a vacant group home 1,000 feet away. If you are really in this for the benefit of young homeless women who are in crisis, why not utilize that space to get these women the help that they need? That's not going to be in our backyard and in front of our house if you're not in it for the profit. And another thing, just about the other children that these women will be having, is going to be a huge stressor on our elementary school that's already suffering. And I think that's all I have to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Melissa?
Okay, I'd like to make a clarification. On the public hearing notice, the request indicates, the CUP is requested in the R5, excuse me, 6,000 square foot residence district. I'd just like to clarify that that is the minimum lot size in the district. That doesn't refer to the proposal. Next, we will move on to Daniel Wright. Daniel, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Good evening. So I am the president of the Timber Run Estates Homeowners Association. My entire life has been spent in this remote, unincorporated St. Louis County area. With having a young family, this conditional use permit has me and other residents very concerned. I'm against an amended conditional use permit for Our Ladies' Inn at the intersection of Timber Run and the homes that we have worked so hard for. Our association of 108 homes is strongly against this conditional use permit, as well as any development in our green space. I want to briefly touch on the timing of this proposal. The sign was placed parallel to Timber Run, where the sign was only visible from Cypress Way Drive. The sign was conveniently placed on a Thursday afternoon, less than two weeks from the biggest election of our lives, not to mention the big elephant in the room of why we are not in the same room. The middle of a pandemic. Families had their attention on the well-being and keeping the bills paid, not a sign in the woods. Initially, this sign was accompanied by a box containing some information that, as we've all communicated, was a bit misleading, stating a 6,000 square feet, which is what we all presume to be the size of the facility, not 16,000. That box was never replenished, was never, and it was never replenished, and it's actually not even on-site anymore. This plan seems to be rushed and planned to sneak under the noses of our community. Thankfully, our community is strong and is connected and is taking a stand, as you have and will continue to see here today. This proposal implants around-the-clock, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 16,000 square feet facility, with a large parking lot in our front and backyards, 30-plus parking spots, the size of the grocery store that we heard about earlier on Redmond, has a similar-sized parking lot with a large sign at the entrance of our community. Currently, this area, where many homeowners pass daily with the hopes of seeing unique wildlife, turkeys, deer, families enjoy nature walks and sled when we get some snow, would be taken forever. The four and a half acres of green space is surrounded by residential homes by 270 degrees and is not the correct space for any development. This organization has a facility in defiance that is on the backside of bush wildlife and is surrounded by five homes, not at the entrance of a community, not across from children's bus stop, and not in the middle of a well-populated residential area. I want to reinforce this area... I want to reinforce this area is unsuitable for any type of development. There is a reason this area has not been developed by now. Let's not forget the two sinkholes noted on this property that currently fills up with stormwater that is already improperly funneled into our community. MSD has not and will not fix it. They have routinely replaced basements instead of fixing the issues. Many homeowners have spent timeless hours and endless amounts of money to fix their water runoff to only make it their neighbor's problem. Our area already has major issues with how stormwater has been handled from existing developments at Olive and Timber Run, including basement floodings, washouts, corroptions and growing sinkholes. I would like to point out that the proposed area is less than 1,000 feet north of an already vacant group living facility. Every day when I go to and from work, I am reminded that this facility is vacant and has already failed our community. This type of zoning has negative impacts on our community. This decision impacts not only those living currently in this community, but anyone that will in the future. I'd like you to know I've heard opposition and support in opposition from many residents, including District 71 State Rep. Applebaum, residents of neighboring areas of Whispering Hills, Seven Pines, Robinwood, and even the geologist. An online petition was organized and has obtained nearly 150 signatures in opposition to a development at the corner of Timber Run and Cypress Way. I would much rather see this area be sponsored by St. Louis County and made into a nature park. And for reference, our association is currently paying to keep up that Amren Transmission easement that was mentioned multiple times as, you know, being nice and landscaped. Us homeowners, we pay for that. Okay, we pay to keep up our areas and, you know, because we have to look at it every day. You know, folks don't want to wake up and look in their backyards where they're used to throwing open the blinds because only a deer could look in and see this giant facility that would not match in and blend in with our, with our community. That facility is large, 36 spaces. That's the size of a small grocery store at the corner of Redmond and 367, the same sized parking lot in my front yard. I ask you to say no to this permit.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Melissa, we have anybody else?
We have several, we have several comments. Next, oh, and also you've spoken, if you could click your hand, raise hand button again to lower it. We would appreciate that. Next we'll go to Brian Yawitz. Brian?
Hello. Okay, thank you for your time. Um, I'll be very respectful of everyone's time. Um, particularly, I grew up in the neighborhood. I am currently a property owner with my two sisters. Um, this particular property, uh, I've enjoyed the nature of sledding as a child. Um, people and children regularly bike in the area, as has been mentioned. There are multiple wildlife species in the area. This is actually a very admirable idea that you all have here put in absolutely wrong location. I can't be any more blunt. The combination of deliveries, light pollution, noise pollution, questionable tenants, which I would like to ask a question about the tenants and, and you can just get back to me on rebuttal on this. If 163 people have been served over the last five years in your facilities, I'm curious how many have not been from the county? Because it seems very clear to me that's not a large number. This facility should be located, as uh, someone else wisely mentioned, closer to the served population. Not here. This is a completely residential area. Um, it's not, I hate to even say this, but it's not a question of if, but when something really bad happens, either an accident with wildlife, God forbid a child. Um, possible criminal activity, which I would be a little concerned with if your residents can come and go at will at any time of the night. Just pretend that this was being proposed right next to your house. This needs to be put somewhere else. That, that is my sincere and honest opinion. And it should be turned into a nature facility. Um, I think that's a smashing idea. We don't have sidewalks. You're inviting disaster here. Actually do not appreciate the way this has been introduced. Thank you for your consideration. That's all I've got.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, next will be Jason Dockery. Jason, you are unmuted to give your comments.
All right, thank you very much. I, uh, am one of the residents on Cypress Way Drive. And I'd just like to say that this location is an intrusion that fundamentally changes the nature of our residential space. Uh, this intersection is the only exit actually for three different streets. You go down Cypress Way, you make a left, and then you can also make another left. So it's essentially just a hook shaped spur that ends in a, uh, a cul-de-sac. Uh, it's the only way out for our cars. Uh, our children on their bikes, families walking with strollers. Uh, it's the school bus stop. As somebody mentioned, they wanted to know where the school bus stop was. It's right there at Cypress Way and Timber Run, where you're wanting to put this, uh, entrance to this huge parking lot. Um, there are no streetlights, as has been mentioned. There are no sidewalks on Cypress Way or Tender Run. Uh, I'm certain that the beginning of this construction, um, especially when the area has, there is an area that essentially is going to have to be deforested right there at Cypress Way and Timber Run. There's, there is a lot, large, large, beautiful trees. Um, construction equipment, uh, the tree equipment, it's going to make us feel trapped and impede our ability to get out of here. This location is just simply not feasible, no matter how admirable the mission of the, uh, of these documents may be. Please pick somewhere else. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Will be Michael Howard. Michael, you are unmuted to give your comments.
Yeah, thank you very much. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of the property owner, which is Youth Bridge Community Foundation. Uh, formerly the Children's Orphanage, General Protestant Children's Home. And, um, we fully support the petitioner's request for the amended conditional use permit. Uh, for these reasons, uh, the intended use is consistent with the prior uh, conditional use permit that was approved by the commission in 2017. The intended use is consistent with the history and legacy of the property owner as a former children's home. Uh, the intended use is consistent with the neighboring property to the south, Good Shepherd School. Uh, the property as laid out provides a buffer transition to the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and the, uh, the ultimate user, the buyer, Our Ladies Inn, provides a, a critical service to the community and and I, and, and lives of children and women are improved and in some cases actually saved through the services and support provided by Our Ladies Inn. I've also heard this evening questions about the building located at 12685 Olive Boulevard. And on although, although that is somewhat irrelevant to this petition, uh, the building is approximately 60 years old and is no longer economically viable. The operational costs, deferred maintenance expenses and the cost to remodel it and bring it up to modern standard, standard would be, uh, simply too high. Uh, so we, uh, as a property owner are fully in support of this petition and believe it's consistent with the previous conditional use permit that was approved by the commission in 2017. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Gina O'Brien. Gina, you unmuted to give your comments.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I agree with so many others of our community that I guess I didn't understand about the building at the end of the street, why it couldn't be used. It's, it's been there for a long time and it's been vacant over a complete year. I know. And there are rooms there. It was used as a residential facility before. And much like the other neighbors have said, our streets are very narrow. We do not even have sidewalks. Not to mention the water issues, we also have pull on electricity. If there's a storm in this neighborhood, you can bet we don't have any electricity. I'm wondering how all this electricity is going to, the, the pull on our normal electricity is going to do the same thing. And our school at Ross is very crowded. It is overcrowded. I work for Parkway School District. So I understand what everybody is worried about. I support their mission, Our Ladies Inn. It's a wonderful thing, but this is not the place for it. Thank you.
Next we'll go to Candace Gordon. Candace, you are unmuted.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have to say I'm so proud of my neighbors because I know that we are all so very concerned about this petition. Um, this is where we live. This is where we live. This area is a zone for residential use for a reason. Uh, and everything that everybody said are things that I thought I wanted to say, but I'm going to reiterate because it's that important. There are, this is a wonderful community. Um, so many, so many families with young kids. It's wonderful. I see them all the time walking. They're pulling, pushing strollers. They're walking their dogs. We do not have sidewalks. We do not have streetlights, but we're out and about all the time in our wonderful neighborhood that we love so much. And putting a building there with all this traffic is just an accident waiting to happen. I think somebody else put it that way too. It's just atrocious. Um, that green space that's there, that's all the green space we have and we love it. We all love it. It contributes to the peace and serenity of our neighborhood and our lifestyle. And I agree, I don't remember who it was that said it, but it should be converted into actually a park, uh, for us. We, it's a very big part of what we love in our neighborhood. But you want to put your building right in the middle of a neighborhood. Building, your building will be facing homes. Uh, your building will be, uh, behind homes. You're just going to drop a building right in the middle of our wonderful, beautiful residential community? How would you feel if that happened to you? Um, I don't remember the person who was, the one person who was in favor of this. I don't remember if he said he lived in the subdivision, but I can't imagine that he does. Um, but I have to reiterate on all the points because they're all true. The traffic that would be coming in and out, not just with the residents and the staff, but the deliveries. And I mean, just all of this traffic and the lighting, and this is going on 24/7 in a peaceful, quiet residential neighborhood. Um, I just can't imagine this. This is going to be nothing but concern and chaos for people who live in a very peaceful, wonderful neighborhood that we love so much. And our homes to a lot of people are one of our biggest assets that we have. This is just going to bring down our home values tremendously. Sales will slow. Uh, the price of the homes will be, have to be reduced because nobody wants to live around this. Good Shepherd, um, preschool is as far north as any facility should be on Timber Run. Nothing should go past that. This is a residential street. Timber Run is a residential street. And again, I'm going to reiterate, this is where we live. And you want to drop a facility in the middle of our homes, of our community, of our neighborhood, a place that we cherish and love so much. Uh, I just can't imagine. It's, it's inconsiderate. It's selfish. There are other places to go. Uh, I implore you, please take your facility. The mission is wonderful, but it does not belong here. Please take your facility and build it somewhere else, or maybe try to find a way to, uh, use that building at the top of the street. Uh, I, I, I don't know how, but there are better solutions than doing this to a neighborhood of people who are so concerned about this. It will change our lives and our children's and children, the children's lives who live here. And yes, the, the, the wildlife that, that lives in that green space, we cherish that too. Um, it's a very diverse, um, mix of wildlife, the deer, uh, and, and I mean, all kinds of wildlife that we love. It's, it's part of what we love about our neighborhood. You're going to be taking that away from us and you're going to be causing accidents with, with the wildlife. And like somebody else said, God forbid a child. It's right there by a bus stop for God's sakes. So please put on your thinking cap and, and, and think about how you would feel if you lived in this subdivision and had this, this building just dropped in the middle of where we live. Um, please reconsider and take your building somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Carlton Washburn. Carlton, you are unmuted.
Yes, good evening and thanks for your time. One thing we agree on here is that this is going to change our neighborhood in a very fundamental way. Just not in a good way. You're dropping in basically effectively a business in the middle of a residential area. The lighting wasn't actually addressed in the plan and the neighbors had a lot of concern about that. And the buffer zone was really, really vague. So how do we address this with our backyards in our neighborhoods? And the last point I would make is if somehow or another this miraculously does go through and multiple homeowner associations and the many people on the phone tonight are just bluntly ignored. Now I'd ask the planning commission for a PUD. So things like lighting, buffer zones and the other concerns that can be bound to the actual construction. Thank you.
Okay, next we'll go to Jonathan Lindberg.
Hello. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jonathan Lindberg and I own a home in, uh, Timber Run. I'm asking you to reject this conditional permit for six reasons. As a lifelong resident of unincorporated St. Louis County, I grew up on that school bus route that served the Protestant Children's Home, stopped at the top of the hill, went down and stopped at Cypress Way and Timber Run. I'm now a homeowner in this neighborhood and I can appreciate the 60 year relationship my neighbors had with Youth Bridge, the owner of that 12685 Olive Boulevard parcel. In fact, the former superintendent and his wife lived on my street in 1970s, Palm Ridge Court. My concern tonight is that the publicly available application materials for the back portion of this lot under consideration do not meet the legal standards of St. Louis County. And also the public has not been presented with all of the known facts for the use of 12685 Olive Boulevard. So here are those six reasons. Number one, the application does not meet the legal requirements of the conditional use permit procedure 1003.181. Specifically, two things are missing. The preliminary plan for stormwater quality control measures does not include a pond that is on site. The preliminary plan also does not include stream buffer areas for a stream that is on site. Those are both available in public records, which I will submit to the planning commission. Number two, site survey. The con, the site survey conducted did not include that pond in the stream. And that's pond is actually fed by the stormwater retention pond, which exists on the preschool portion of the parcel. The site survey was performed on October 7th, 2020, and they likely missed the standing water because of a long period of drought preceding that date. Number three, this application does not represent the full current planning for the residentially zone parcel at 12685. Their plan is to become a retail and commercial development. The olive facing frontage is actively for sale as a commercial and retail development. That is one of the financial reasons that the petitioner will not use the existing developed group home that is on the site. And that is not consistent with what Youth Bridge said in their comments here tonight. They did not mention that they are planning to sell that land for retail use. Number four, the county issued public notice contained inaccurate information regarding the public access plans. The URL provided in the flyer did not lead to a functional website. And in addition, the planning commission webpage right now only says webpage coming soon. The fifth reason, this development is going to lower land values for the neighboring community and those are future damages. Number six, this petition is not filed by property owners or a resident or anyone using the land currently. It should be noted that many speakers here tonight are residential landowners who will be adversely affected. I'd like to return to three issues quickly from earlier where I'd like to clarify. Number one, the previous permit was issued after Youth Bridge and Haven House met with this community and met with the nearby residents. Number two, the pictures used tonight were deceptive. There are 12 adjacent private homes. Adjacent, just like the homes right across the street there. And there is a sinkhole on Timber Run Drive about 100 feet from where they're planning their ingress and egress. And that's my other, uh, other point of clarification here. That ingress egress is directly facing private drivers, contrary to what you said, Mr. Stock. It's directly across the street from private homes. 12 family homes, 500 feet from my driveway, 100 feet from my neighbor's driveway. So in summary, at the heart of St. Louis County strategic plan are its residents, the communities we call home and the opportunities we have to improve our lives. And I think this planning commission can learn from history. The original German General Protestant orphan home was located at 4447 Natural Bridge Road. That lot is now a rundown retail save a lot. I want St. Louis County to avoid a potentially similar outcome. We are your residents. Please reject this conditional use permit procedure. And I also would like to ask the petitioners, please withdraw your petition. At the very least, we require more information to be properly shared with the public. Thank you very much. And also thank you to Melissa for helping me with the information she provided.
All right, next we'll go to Rebecca Dockery. Rebecca, you are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, first I would like to say that I mean no disrespect to Our Ladies Inn and their mission. It's clear that they are passionate about what they do and that there is It's clear that they are passionate about what they do and that there is uh, they're very, you know, appreciated for the role they play in society. However, I, you know, they came in very uh, with their presentation, talking about their homeless population and stating that they're not a domestic violence shelter, not a substance abuse home, not a mental health shelter. Um, those are three of the four main causes of homelessness. And so if you're housing homeless people and not dealing with those three things, you're being negligent in your services. Uh, you cannot work with homeless people and not address those things. You cannot bring homeless people into our community and not deal with those things. Those are things that services that homeless people need in order to become functional members of society. The fourth piece of that puzzle is job training and financial literacy. You did not address that in your um, presentation about what your organization does, and I hope that you'll address that in your rebuttal to see if that is a piece of your service. Um, but those are the things that people need to overcome homelessness. So I hope that you can um, address that because those are, you know, necessary in overcoming homelessness. And those are the things that if you, you know, if you ask us as neighbors of this facility to accept you into our neighborhood, those are the things that we're worried about and we have a right to be worried about those things. Now, we as homeowners, uh, if we wanted to make changes to our own property, we would have to do so with an eye towards not damaging our neighbors' properties. We would have to go through a very strict process um of getting applications and permits and reviews to make sure that whatever we did didn't impact the people around us. And it's clear that that same consideration was not given to anyone around this property in terms of the neighbors and the residences around this facility or this proposed facility. Because there are significant stormwater issues from higher up the hill on the south side of Olive that have just been ignored for years. And paving over this green space is going to make those so much worse for the people whose basements already flood. Um, you know, these, it's the traffic, again, we've talked about this several times, but where your driveway is in your pictures, that's not next to the bus stop. That is the bus stop. That's where my children and my neighbor's children stand every day and wait for the bus to come take them to school. My five-year-old stands there every morning waiting for the bus. You know, so you're going to have all these commercial vehicles coming and going and making deliveries and dropping people off. Ambulance is coming. They're not going to see a five-year-old standing there waiting for the bus. You know, I wouldn't be able to make these kinds of changes or bring things to my neighborhood without thinking about how it would affect my neighbors. And in having those, again, same without you all coming and bringing these things into our neighborhood without thinking or even giving us an ounce of consideration to how your facility will impact the rest of us is, is just asinine. Um, you know, there's dozens of homes that'll be impacted from the traffic, the overflow, the light pollution and the decreased home values. Uh, it's, I can't even put it into words how angry I am right now. Thank you.
Next will be Chris Stone. Chris, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I uh, I walk the neighborhood. Uh, it's, it, everything's been mentioned here tonight. Um, we walk the dog. There's no sidewalks. The streets are narrow, no streetlights. Um, you know, we ride our bikes and I'm just concerned with all the traffic that come, would come down Timber Run. Um, very narrow street, uh, subdivision street. Uh, it's not built for that type of traffic. Um, you're adding thirty-four regular spots and plus another, I think you said four or so handicap. Um, so a, a lot of traffic in twenty-four seven. Um, yeah, that's, it's very concerning. Um, Timber Run and Olive, the, are there any plans to improve that subdivision, that, that intersection would need to be improved. It would need to be widened. Timber Run would need to be widened to accommodate more traffic. Cause right now, Timber Run, when you leave the subdivision and you go up, uh, it backs up to BK right there at Burger King's driveway. And there's times when right now it backs up to that Burger King driveway. And you have to wait for two lights to get out onto Olive. So that's, what are the plans for for um, the reconstruction, the widening of Timber Run at Olive? And, and are there any, are there any plans for that? I guess is my question. The speed limit on Timber Run is twenty-five miles an hour. But as you come down Timber Run from Olive, uh, approaching this parcel we're talking about here. Uh, it is a, a pretty good grade. You're coming downhill and um, your speed, uh, there's, the people come down that hill. They don't, they don't ride their brakes coming down. So people are speeding coming down that hill now. So uh, big concern there. Uh, they talked about the bus stop. Um, and everybody, well, it's been mentioned before, the Haven House and, and that was the permit, th- this thing was permitted before for Haven House. Um, I think uh, they were, they were wanting to do a development there and, and move their facility down to there at one point. Um, totally different operation. And I don't, um, I did, I, I don't understand. Well, I think somebody touched on it earlier and it makes it clear. I think it's, it's, it's uh, for sale now and, and I think um, a developer, the uh, uh, retail would be a lot more profitable than, than using it as a facility. And I know it's an old facility. Our houses were built in the sixties. Uh, we have to maintain them. We update our houses. And there's no reason why you couldn't update that facility where the old Ha- Haven House was and make that um, usable space. Uh, there's too many, too many places up and down. Up, you just go up and down Olive and we're, we're building new office buildings and you go next door and there's an office for lease. Uh, so it, it, it just doesn't make sense. It's waste. Um, yeah, the, the uh, the kids might concern, one thing that really, really concerns me when you mentioned that the kids stay with their mom here, some kids, you know, if they have other children that they can stay there. Um, and that is a big concern on, uh, you know, those kids running the neighborhood and, and um, who's going to be watching them? Um, so uh, they, I guess the other, the last thing I'll share is, is, I don't know, that at one point there was a, something about a, a sunshine law that when this, when this subdivision was developed back in the sixties, um, that there was, there, I don't know if there's a sunshine law out there we could look up that, that uh, it required so much green space. So those are my comments and thanks for letting me share.
Hey, thank you.
Next, Mike and Sarah Carter.
Thank you. Um, I, I'll try to make this brief. Uh, we own the property that's uh, just uh, to the east of the southeast tip. Um, and uh, right there is a large sinkhole. And all of the water that runs off of that plot of land and isn't caught by a, a catchment basin there will, will run into our sinkhole and increase uh, how fast it erodes um, our backyard. So what I didn't see in this proposal was a description of uh, how large these catchment basins are uh, planned to be and uh, how many inches of rainfall they can catch and hold and uh, drop into the ground slowly. Cause I do know our springs, our spring rains have been uh, pretty intense here and definitely last spring, my property saw a lot of runoff uh, of water from both the uh, the, but the body of water by the Good Shepherd uh, preschool, or school there. Um, secondly, uh, we saw a lot of pictures of the trees uh, in full foliage. Um, they do make an excellent site blocker during the summer. Those leaves are falling now. I think if you took the pictures of this uh, property and the edges of the property now, or maybe in two weeks from now, you'd see that there'd be, really be no effective visible barrier with less than a hundred feet of uh, naked woods uh, between this building and all of the properties that are adjacent to it. I think that's all I have. I just, and I of course support the rest of the comments that other members of our neighborhood have uh, made uh, about the fact that we have narrow streets. Um, and a lot of kids playing in the streets, including our two young children. Thank you.
Okay, next will be Karen Schroder, Schrader. Excuse me. Karen, you are unmuted.
Uh, yes, can you hear me? This is David Schrader.
Okay, we can hear you.
All right, yeah, and I'm strongly pro- opposed to this also. I live right across, right at the intersection of Cypressway and Kimmerun. And uh, I s- I see the, a lot of things that was already mentioned on the call today, you know, the added traffic, noise level, the light, lighting uh, in the middle of the night, emergency vehicles going in and out and so forth. Uh, the water runoff issue, the uh, I, I got a question on the, the water basins that are these retention ponds, whatever you want to call them. Are they being fenced or, or what? Uh, a lot, a lot of times when it rains real hard, water coming down off of Cypressway to the bottom of the hill. The currents uh, storm drains uh, can't handle the water. It cools there when you drive through uh, during a heavy rain. So yeah, I've got a lot of concerns as my other neighbors as to uh, uh, the uh, what it's going to bring to the neighborhood. So today we feel safer, we go tell her, let our kids outside, go ride your bikes, you know, it, once this facility goes in. I'm not sure that's going to be the situation. Property values will, will plummet and, and uh, uh, I don't see it a plus for the neighborhood. I definitely see, see it a plus for, for the seller, but I don't see it a plus for this. Thank you.
Next will be Catherine Lynn. Catherine, you are unmuted.
Um, hello, I'm not going to take much time. I uh, just wanted to reiterate some of the concerns that other neighbors had uh, with uh, property values. Um, I understand, understand what he said about not wanting to um, uh, renovate Haven House. Over, um, I still don't truly understand why it's easier to deforest a lot of area rather than knock down the existing facility. But all of that, I, with taking all that away, having a facility rotting at the end of the street and then going further into the residential neighborhood and creating another facility that uh, is just going to really hurt uh, property values. Um, and when this, there's something zoned for just up the street. Um, and also, uh, I don't know, it just feels like a paved paradise to put up a parking lot situation. We have, uh, you know, we have a facility, we have an area that is already uh, developed that is uh, doing the same thing. Uh, and, and uh, I, I guess I would be one of the people with the strollers that people see. I have young children in the neighborhood. Um, it's a, it, it, just any sort of increase in traffic would be notable with uh, how tight our streets are. And we even have a great deal of signage to try to keep people from uh, increasing the traffic in our neighborhood from Olive, since it gets high traffic anyway. And the last thing I'll say is that our basement flooded a couple of years ago uh, with a foot of water because um, the uh, sewer system in this area is overwhelmed. I can't imagine, I, I know that you are giving all the assurances, but I just don't see how, since we have worked with MSD ourselves, that it's not going to put strain on an already overtaxed MSD system in this area. So I have a, a lot of concerns on that level, but thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, this will be Hoy Lu.
Hi. Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I just want to briefly and say, you built a building right back to my backyard. And I was so extremely angry and I'm so upset. I opposed the project. Because you know what? The sinkhole and the stormwater system, it's just terrible. It's getting, getting worse, you know, in the recent year. And there was a couple of years and there was a heavy storms, you know, heavy rain. It just within two hours can be flooding our whole backyard. Not, not only me, it just right next to my neighbor. It's the same thing. So if you build your building right, right at my backyard, it's going to getting my flooding even worse. And the sewer system is not going to, you know, improve our flooding issues. So also you're going to increase your light pouring, light pollutions and your noise pollutions. Because you have twenty-four hours, you know, people's runnings, you know, in the buildings, you know, people in and out. You might be invite, you know, some criminals, you know, mixing up, you know, coming, you know, people, strangers, outsiders, you know, coming in and out in our societies, in our community. I don't even feel comfortable. I don't even feel safe anymore to let my kids out. And I was so angry, you know, when the people, when they posted, they say six thousands, it's going to getting my, getting my backyard and it's going to twenty-four hours. I see your, you polluted my living environment. So I understand, you know, you have a good, um, you have good missions. But there must be, like my neighbors say, there must be some much better place. You're not building, you know, your, your facility around our neighborhood, around the residential area. I just don't understand why you choose, have to, you know, right in people backyard, right in people community. And I just don't understand why you're building the facility here. Just stay away our, our community and our living environment. You're damaging our living environment. Thank you.
Okay, next will be Doug Depp. Doug, you are unmuted.
Hi, thanks for giving me a chance to speak. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, uh, first like I say, I have some amazing neighbors. They've hit on all the points that I had, so I'll, I'll try not to repeat them. I second everything they said about the uh, you know, space and usage and traffic and everything else, and especially the water runoff that we have. Uh, I live on Mark Air, so I'm kind of right off to the right of that, where that A on the right-hand side is. Um, one thing I, I didn't hear mentioned, you know, they talked about this power cut that provides a uh, you know, extra space. One thing a power cut does do is limit your ability to plant large trees, large shrubbery, things like that. Uh, it's going to make it more difficult to even screen off the property. Um, which means you're going to be able to see it, especially when you have sinkholes and runoff ponds on that edge of the property. Um, I did want to ask a couple of questions for the developer. Um, one, are you funded? When are you going to build this thing? Uh, as you said, you uh, alluded to, or the property owner did. Uh, oh, we got this back in twenty seventeen. Um, great, you met with us before, you told us everything and it didn't go forward. So are we going to be here again in three years? Not going forward. Um, the property owner already said they have a vacant building at the other end of the lot. Great. So you have a rundown building that you said can't be used. Um, but you're going to build another facility on our area. Uh, doesn't seem like a great idea. You're infringing on our uh, neighborhood and the, the area that we have built. Uh, and then one last question, how do people get to your site? Um, this is for pregnant uh, women. Do they all have cars? Uh, because the bus route doesn't run there. Uh, you're going to have to, what, get off the bus up on Olive, walk down that hill, as we said, no sidewalks, narrow road. Uh, maybe you have uh younger children that you're uh bringing with you. It, it, the location just doesn't make sense for this kind of thing. Um, why not in the area that's on a bus route that has great access to uh other facilities around it? Uh, that maybe is in an area where there's affordable housing, so it's uh, you can uh be in, in the, the area and uh get back on your feet and, and buy a home in the same area so that you can find these kind of things that are going on. So um, that's kind of all my opinion. I think our, my neighbors are on track. They have all the right points and uh definitely opposed to the plan. Uh, thank you.
Okay, next will be Jill Henderson.
Uh, hello, my name is Jill Henderson. I do not live in Timber Run. I live in Robinwood West and I share the same elementary school. Uh, I'm a retired school counselor and I have every compassion for working with the homeless and the need for a place like this. But I also have compassion for the residents of the neighborhood. If you stand right across the street, there's four homes. If any of those people want to put their homes up for sale, they will have to disclose that this is coming up. Uh, that this is going to be built once it's all through. If you go, uh, if you go around the side of the property, there's backyards there. That really, really, uh, I'm, I'm looking for a house currently uh with a basement, because we don't have, we don't have, I don't have a basement. And uh, I would not want to live near a big um building like this. It, you know, the lights, the lights, the traffic, everything that they say is true. If you go, I go, I've gone down Timber Run Drive and uh Cypress Way many times. It's very narrow, very, very narrow. And there's no sidewalks and I feel for the people, I would not want to live across from any kind of building, no matter what it was. Um, so that, I'm just here to support uh Timber Run and that's all I have to say. I think everything else has been said, but thank you very much for listening.
Okay, next will be Craig Rich. Craig?
Yes, hello. Thank you for your time. Um, a lot of my points have been made, but I wanted to make a few more. Um, I guess we've heard a lot of people in the community that are in some of the back roads of the community. Um, I just wanna say I'm house number four. A woman earlier alluded to that, basically where the driveway dumps out into my front yard. So um, a couple of my points, the driveway literally from the drawing points into my two daughters' bedroom. So I don't know what kind of traffic is coming and going at night, but I have a child that has sleeping issues already. Um, headlights all night long pointing directly into my daughter's bedroom. Seems very problematic. I showed her the drawing and she started crying, said, I can't sleep already. What am I gonna do? Um, you guys might, might not care about that, but anybody as a parent knows that's kind of a big thing. Um, a couple of other points that people raised. Early where the driveway dumps out. When I first moved in here, I couldn't believe, um, I saw kids standing at the bus stop after daylight savings time. There's no light at all. You can't see anything. You come down the street and there's, you know, five PM, whatever, in the morning in the winter, and there's kids standing out there and you can't see anything. And there's no sidewalk, there's no lights. And now we're gonna put a commercial driveway with hundreds of vehicles coming in and out every day. It just seems like absolute disaster. Um, another thing, you know, the flooding people have talked about, I have a sewer um on my fence line between my yard and my neighbor's yard. There's a river that flows through on every heavy rain. There's a foot of water flowing through sometimes. Um, my fence is sunken into the ground. I had other issues. MSD comes out. Sometimes they fix it. Sometimes they say, sorry, too bad, your problem. Uh, my neighbor who actually has the sewer in his yard is a little lower, has had his basement flood multiple times, has had struggles with MSD to fix it. Um, we're right across the street where now, you know, some of this water overflow goes and now you're gonna pave the whole thing. I just have no idea what that's gonna do to the water issues. Um, there's, you know, not a lot of, for children in this area, there's not a lot of walkable parks that are close by. Um, just living right across the street, I see all the neighborhood kids come and they sled there. They, you know, just people coming in and out of those wooded areas that are just going on. I just talked to my neighbor the other day and he said during COVID, you know, he can't hang out with his grandkids inside because he's immunocompromised. So they've been going over there and taking walks through the woods and he says it's just been a absolute dream come true. Like, you feel like you're on vacation because you can't actually go on vacation right now, but you can take a nature walk. And it just feels like, you know, another place. And I know when I first moved in here, there were always cars stopping right across the street from my house and it was weird and I was like, what is everybody doing? But people stopped there because it's one of the few areas around here that's really shaded and really quiet. And I noticed all these people that work around here in the businesses, they just eat lunch there. And it's just a really peaceful, quiet spot that there's trees, there's not, you know, anything going on in the middle of the day and we're gonna just take that all away and have this giant complex move in and it'll feel like, you know, Walmart parking lot across from me. Um, a couple of other points, sorry, I don't want to take up too much time, but we have a uh, a friend that's a police officer and, you know, we would hear just like people revving their tires, just flying down the street. Somebody brought it up earlier that the grade of the street just naturally promotes speeding because it's all downhill coming from Olive and it's perfectly straight. So we asked a St. Louis County police officer we knew, who, this was his jurisdiction, if he could just, you know, come do some traffic on our street and within an hour, I think he caught twenty people going over fifty miles an hour. And it's, you know, twenty-five, it's a residential area. So adding a bunch of commercial vehicles to that, along with the bus stop point I made earlier, that, I mean, it just seems like, I don't even let my kids play in the front yard because people fly through here at like fifty, sixty miles an hour all the time. Um, another point people already made, but the ambulances, like I said with the headlights, I mean, the ambulances have been pretty good in this neighborhood of I see up late, I see like at midnight, I see the lights out my window, but I don't hear the sirens because they turn them off because they know it's a neighborhood. But with this being, you know, people in desperate need, like I'm having a baby, it's coming right now. The concern of ambulance sirens going off, coming down our street all the time, even the lights kind of can wake you up. And uh, that's a big concern. I mean, people already raised the concern of uh, you know, the property right down the street that's readily available, from what I heard from the gentleman earlier. It, it's a sixty-year-old property that's too expensive. We don't want to spend the money to renovate that. So to me, this sounds like, well, this land is cheaper, so we don't really care about this neighborhood. We just want to get the best deal for our money. And that just seems like an injustice to the regular people that are just trying to raise their kids in this neighborhood. So that's uh, my final point. I haven't heard any points of any positives really other than developers, so thank you for your time.
Okay, next will be Bob Pastor.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay. I am one of the original owners of the neighborhood. It'll be sixty years in May. This is a completely inappropriate use for this property. It's a threat to the health and the safety of these neighbors. The goal of your facility is admirable, but this is an inappropriate use of the land. The area is already way too dense at the top of Timber Run. There's too much traffic. The light making a left onto Olive is already extremely long. There's poor visibility on Timber Run Drive as it is right now. I apologize if I will repeat some of the things have already been said and ask some of the questions that have already been asked, but they are important to address. I feel that you are extremely misleading. Why are you supporting sobriety? If this is not a rehab facility, why are you treating depression and anxiety if you aren't a mental health facility? That's exactly what you are. You're endangering the lives of the kids that live in this neighborhood. Some of my questions are, what are the ages of the children at this facility? Are they there until they're teens? At what age do the mothers need to leave with the children? Are their visitors allowed? What times of the day are these visitors allowed? A statement, there are gonna be ambulances going back and forth, all day, all night, whenever these women are delivering. I was one of the children that would sled on those hills and play in those fields and in the woods. That will all be gone. You quickly showed your plans, which I believe revealed thirty-four parking spaces. There is no way that that's enough parking for your residents and your employees. Just where is your overflow of parking going to go? I also want to know if these residents can leave at their own will, okay? Any times of the night, any times of the day. I really just think that this is a very poorly thought out idea. It needs to be taken elsewhere. This isn't an appropriate place for this facility. It is admirable, but it's not the rate, the right space. So if you could answer some of those questions and all the other questions, because I grew up in this neighborhood. I'm one of the original two, three houses other than the farmhouse. So I know everything that's transpired in this neighborhood over the last sixty years. Thanks.
Okay, next will be Dan Dawson. Dan, you are unmuted.
Hello, this is actually Cheryl Dawson, his wife. Um, I'll be brief because everybody, all of our great neighbors have touched upon everything that I would have commented as well on. What I'd like to think about and have you guys think about is, you know, just the construction vehicles alone that it's gonna take to build a facility like this is going to tear up our streets. Our streets were just repaved here a few years ago. Um, and it was, they're already deteriorating and the concrete trucks and the delivery trucks that are gonna be coming in is gonna do nothing but tear up problems that we're already having with, with our roads. And I don't, nobody has mentioned this yet before. Uh, but I do have a construction background. I know what kind of vehicles it's gonna take to build a facility like this. And with the school bus stop being right there and all the vehicles coming through, I just can't see this happening. And my family, um, we live around the corner on Susan Air and we are right near the Ameren power lines where the where we do see wildlife from our front yard. We do also have problem with flooding as well because we are at the bottom of the hill. It, there's going to be runoff and sludge and everything else from these concrete trucks to build this facility. And I'm afraid it's gonna go right into our basement. And that's all I have to say. Please do not pass this.
Okay, if you could unclick your raise hand button when you're finished speaking, we'd appreciate that. Next will be Avi Osner. Avi?
Yeah, hi. Um, first of all, George, thank you for returning my call. I did call you. I was the guy that called you, I think it was last Friday, to ask some questions, so I appreciate the callback. Um, so I live sort, I'm the, the third house down on Timber Run. And I'm just gonna tell a quick story that doesn't repeat anything. This is absolutely true. So we cannot be close to our grandchildren right now. Um, and they came over on Saturday and they said, hey, let's go play in the woods. And in the summer, when you're in the middle of that woods, you cannot see our house on Timber Run and you can't see Mike's. He spoke earlier. You can't see his house right when you're in the middle of that woods. Now, of course, you can. They love playing there. They catch insects, they catch frogs. Not now because it's of the time of year. Um, then my son, my grandson spent about forty minutes on a rotten tree, right, sort of, you can see Mike's house from there. Just looking for insects and playing with rotten wood and stuff like that. Um, they like to go into that po- uh, into that runoff pond that you all talked about. Um, because when there's water there, there are ducks there, there are tadpoles there, there are frogs there. It is a wonderland of nature and for children. Um, and it's a shame to take that away. So again, people have talked about that building and, and I just want to bring a bit of honesty to this. That building can be gutted and it can be rehabbed. Mercy Hospital was interested in that building, I know. And one of the reasons they liked it because there was a gym there where kids can play. They would have used it for, for, you know, physical therapy. It's a perfect place and, and a perfect facility for that. I agree. It's not maintainable now, but it could be. So why wouldn't that organization want people to be there? And it's, it's, the, the reason is one word, profit. They want to sell that facility to retail space and make money. Where they can be retrofitted. It can be. Might even be cheaper, I don't know. It's certainly probably not cheaper to build that new place, plus sell that for a profit. So what I believe is right now is if St. Louis County decides to develop that property in our neighborhood, it will be because they, they are taking profits over our welfare. Um, Ladonna, you can put up a sign on my uh neighborhood if you run next time on our front lawn. Thank you. Um, and I also have a question for the thing, will you guys put up a bond? For two things, one, to cover any costs of extra flooding and two, to cover the differences between our property values now and what they will go down to. Because where I live, I would imagine my property value will be cut in half. Not selling, I'm not going anywhere, but I imagine when it does come time, I'm sixty-seven, for us to sell our house, it'll be worth approximately half. Will you guys cover that difference? And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Next will be Jim, no last name, Jim.
Uh, yes, I um.
Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. If you could start over, I accidentally muted you.
Okay, I said I live behind uh the proposed facility off, off Mark Air. So I, I look, my backyard looks into that property. And um, my understanding was the last proposal from the prior owners was that certain sized trees weren't supposed to be taken down. And when I look at the map, I see green, but I don't see trees. It looks like maybe you're planning on making that grass. Um, so I would think all the houses that back up to it on Mar Care are gonna lose their woods or part of it. And in the wintertime, that means you're gonna be looking at that. And I, I can also say that the water issue on the um sinkholes is extreme already. And if, and the only proposal I heard was that they're gonna use the sinkholes as their runoff and they're losing all that green space where it absorbs the water and making pavement and buildings. And I didn't hear anything about sewer systems. So I don't see how there's not gonna be flooding. I'm also gonna probably uh not be so politically correct. Um, I've been divorced since oh seven and there was a couple of times when I dated some girls and they, a couple of them ended up in facilities similar to this. And they were allowed, I was allowed to pick them up during the day and they had stories of the other girls there that were picked up by some uh not so nice gentlemen. And uh, some of these girls weren't so nice either. So I mean, I know you guys are all being politically correct, but the element that you're proposing of bringing into our neighborhood is not a good one. People brought up kids, they got older kids. What are these kids gonna be doing? What are they gonna be teaching our children? Um, mothers that ended up where they ended up, it's terrible, but they ended up in a place where they can't afford to live. They're not even section eight, where they're trying to maintain jobs. They're also gonna be out looking for jobs. They wander around, they walk. Who knows where, looking for a job because a lot of these places require them to have a job. So they gotta go out and find So they got to go out and find a job. They're going to be wandering the streets, looking for the jobs in between the businesses in our neighborhoods. Maybe meeting new boyfriends, maybe meeting boyfriends as they say they're going out to look for jobs. Hanging out in our streets with their boyfriends, who knows? I mean, these are things you need to think about because, uh, they're not always the nicest people. Unfortunate situations, but they're not always the nicest people. That's it.
Okay, next will be Edward Herzog.
Hi there. Yes, thank you. Um, so I'm a resident of Timber Run subdivision, but I actually live in the quadrant, which is literally the furthest away from all the residents, you know, on and near Cypress Way and Timber Run there, who spoke so eloquently on exactly the concern I have for them as their extended neighbor. But the, the, the impact of the plan as shown is going to be devastating. The dozens and dozens of them in its immediate vicinity, it's going to be difficult even for the people down the street. And we're all going to experience, you know, some new added pain that in, in, in terms of the way it will complicate the traffic issues that the St. Louis County Police already know afflict us in this subdivision. Um, I would, I want to remind the panelists of the points raised by the gentleman who meticulously researched those objections to the composition and the shortcomings of the, of the CUP application as, you know, it was written. Um, you know, it's not the same as the plan in twenty seventeen. Um, and fundamentally, I just want to say that, I mean, so right now, we're all still looking at the page, uh, that Mr. Stock left up. But, um, I had the foresight or, or luck to catch the previous one and, and all the panelists can choose to look at it at their leisure, which was the preliminary development overlay. But I want to make two points. So one is that, um, first of all, you heard from several people who told you something that is not represented in any of the materials. The site in question is at the bottom of a steep hill, right? So all the things that they're saying about, um, they're not exaggerating the inevitable impact of putting this location where the developers would like to put it. It's at the bottom of a steep hill. There's going to be problems. And so, and part of why I want to say that first is the other point of looking at the preliminary development overlay. Or just go onto Google Maps, right? Um, one previous speaker said that, uh, the Good Shepherd preschool, right? Is as far north along Timber Run as any business ought to have ever been placed. And, and, and Good Shepherd is great because, you know, if you look at, uh, in the overlay or on Google Maps, they have placed their, uh, their entranceway as far south as possible. Their facility itself is to the north of their entranceway. Um, so effectively, when you look at that overlay and you look at the proposal, what, um, uh, the, what the, the new developer in, it seems to want to do. And, and this is just, sorry, I'm, I'm a very left-brained person. I work in data analytics. I'm just going to give you the raw numbers, right? The Good Shepherd driveway is effectively around eight hundred feet, um, north of Olive. Where the new driveway is being proposed is almost thirteen hundred feet north of Olive. Right? So you are taking the, the sort of commercial penetration into our subdivision. You're, you're ramping it up by more than fifty percent. And again, you are, you could see on the overlay or on Google Maps exactly how it lays across the street from people who bought their homes without that facility there. Um, and that's really all I needed to say.
Will be Benjamin Steele. Benjamin?
Hi, thanks. Um, I do appreciate the, uh, statistics from the last commenter, by the way. Um, I just wanted to also say that I am against this proposition. Um, I am a current resident that lives down on Palm Ridge. Um, and I am worried, I've already seen a bunch of people leave the neighborhood and a lot of sale signs also go up very quickly here recently. So I am also very worried that this proposition would devastate, um, property value. Um, I also agree that I am a little bit, well, I am worried that this might be able to bring more crime into the area. I know that it's not supposed to by means of the mission of statement. But like other people have said, I do worry about people, um, having friends or lingering attachments or unwanted lingering attachments coming to visit or camp out the neighborhood um, and come past this facility. Um, I think that the light pollution and the storm, uh, drain issue is also a very valid thing. And I also agree with the nature stuff that this is a property that I frequently walk my dogs um, by and they obviously enjoy it. And I know that there's all sorts of nature nearby there, so. I'll keep it short to that. Thank you.
Okay, next will be Jillian Stevens. Jillian?
Hello, um, we're in the first house opposite on Timber Run. And we've lived here for thirteen years. And over those thirteen years, we've added a lot of value to our home. And we're now retired. And we will be selling our home at some point. And it concerns me greatly that my property value will go down. And the appeal for the area was the green space. And the green spaces used by the whole community. We watch what goes on because we're the first house. And we see them sledding on the hill, walking their dogs and taking their kids for walks. And the traffic is bad and it is a narrow street. And so I'm against, I, I love, I love the mission, but I'm against having it in, in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Next will be Monica Horacek. Monica? Okay, we'll come back. We'll go to Dixon Sider. Dixon? I'm not hearing Dixon either. Monica? Okay, I'm not able to hear these last two speakers. Um, I believe that is everyone. If everyone who's spoken could unclick their raise hand, um, it would clear our list a little bit. But I believe, oh. There, here's another one. Oh. Rick Callis, did you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Okay, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Thanks for a chance to weigh in. Uh, I've been, uh, been in and around the community for over forty years. Uh, my parents used to live, uh, Whispering Pines. Um, I've been on the board at Good Shepherd, uh, for fifteen years. On the board at Youth Bridge for fifteen years, past presidents of both organizations. Um, I think it's a pretty consistent use for the property. And I have to say, I'm, and I, I'm really thrilled that the neighbors have been able to use it for, uh, sledding and wildlife watching. Um, but I am impressed with the design that's laid out here because it seems like there's a whole lot of green space. I, I could imagine if, if, um, if this was divided into residential lots, there'd probably be a lot more uh, square footage of building going up, uh, than this current proposal. Um, I just think it's a really nice development and it keeps a lot of nice green space and it respects the area. Um, that's pretty much what I want to say. How's that for brief? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will go to Jeannette Lombard. Jeannette?
Yes, I'm here.
You can go ahead.
Hi, um, I am a, I've lived in Timber Run for about four years now. And one of the things that drew me to, um, the community itself is that it really felt like a retreat. And then, you know, there's lots of businesses on Olive Boulevard. I grew up on just, um, just the south side of, of Olive Boulevard my whole life. My kids now started elementary school. I have a two-year-old and a five-year-old. Um, and especially during COVID, we've just been able to really get to know our neighbors better. Um, Timber Run actually connects two segments of our neighborhood. So when you come out, I live on Karen Way, which is behind Cypress Way, um, in the cul-de-sac area. But when you come, come out onto Tim, Timber Run, you have to go down Timber Run, um, to reach the other part of our neighborhood. Um, and that does pass a bus stop. That is the bus stop is where that driveway is. Um, it's already on a main street and after calling our school district to see if it could get moved closer to where our cul-de-sac is, there is not enough space on the road for a school bus to get down into our community. So there is no choice to move the bus stop. It has to remain there. To me, that is a, a major concern for a lot of the families in the area. There has been a lot of turnover in the last few years and we have a lot of younger families with school-aged children um, who will be accessing that, that bus stop for several different years. Um, something also as a whole, I just wonder, you know, about St. Louis County in general, after being, you know, a resident here for many, many years, I wonder, you know, what are you doing to maintain the residential parts and the retreats of our county? You know, we have a problem with people working at these large companies like Worldwide Technologies and the Barnes West and Bayer that are very close to us and they have to go elsewhere. They go out to St. Charles County and they put their money and they invest it in different places because there isn't, you know, affordable property and nice cohesive neighborhoods around. So by adding in a business in the middle of the neighborhood, you're driving out all of those other potential homes and neighborhoods that can be built and that can, that's a community that can be, uh, continued here in St. Louis County. So, um, you know, obviously I'm strongly against, um, you know, this development being put directly into our neighborhood. It will drive our property, property values down, um, and really just, you know, change our day-to-day life. Um, our sense of home, our sense of community, our sense of safety, and those things are essential, you know, to, to being a happy person and, uh, you know, contributing to our society and being, you know, a member of our county. So thank you for giving me, um, time to speak during your meeting today.
Okay, we'll try Monica again. Monica? Monica?
Yes, can you hear me? Hi, uh, my name is Monica Horacek. I'm living on Timber Run. Been living long couple, couple of years here and I have two children and I am really, really against whole, uh, project. Even it's good cause, but, um, I just want to let you know, we don't trying to take only our, uh, value of the houses, but you're taking away our streets, our playground and, uh, our parks, because that's what this difficult time, our streets are, our neighborhood. That's what we spend since March most of the time because we can go anywhere. We can go to Sky Zone, we can go to al- almost anywhere. So that was the, our park, street and everything for us. So that's, uh, and I'm not even talking about the value of our properties because we always welcome to other people to come with the families. But I don't think they will want it to come if they see what's happening. So I don't want to be the person who have to hide with the kids in the house because of what's happening around. And I really enjoying sitting on my driveway or neighbor's driveway and watching my kids skate bike and my neighbors walking the dogs. And I, please don't take that away from us, please. That's all I would then want to say. Thank you. Good night.
Oh, I think that is all of the speakers. Um, if you did not get a, if you were unable to speak or had any issues, you can also submit your comments via email to planning at S T L O U I S C O dot com. So that's planning at StLouisCo.com.
Okay, yeah. Mr. Stock, you have a rebuttal?
Mr. Chairman, um, and members of the commission and all the residents that spoke, um, uh, we've taken a lot of notes. I personally, um, obviously I, everybody's separate as these property owners are. Uh, I've written down thirty-three speakers. Um, hopefully I didn't miss anybody's comments. And I think it, in a matter of time, um, that this evening, what I would like to suggest is that we um, respond to, uh, St. Louis County, uh, Planning Commission, make those available to the speakers. Uh, written responses to their comments. Um, there's numerous, some are repetitive. And I think we'd like to take the time to digest those um, and create a formal response and send it into the commission if that's acceptable this evening.
Um, I have no issues with that.
Thank you.
And that concludes this hearing. Is that correct, Melissa?
Yes, I, I think that's correct, Wayne. Um, I just want to make sure that we have five planning commissioners. Is Bill Ballard still there?
Yes, Mr. Ballard is here.
Okay, Mr. Lawler is no longer with us, but we have five planning commissioners, so we can take up the one, um, course. Yes.
Okay, you want to go ahead with that?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have our emails?
Uh, hold on. Um, Mel, do you want to answer that?
If you put your email in when you, um, joined the meeting, we will have it. There are, it does seem like people would like a little bit of a rebuttal. I, I mean, I would defer to Mr. Helsinger, but in the chat, people would like a rebuttal of some sort.
Mr. Stock still there?
Yeah, I, I'm here. I think, you, you know, the issue is there's a number of the comments, technical ones that I address relative to traffic, stormwater, um, birmingham grading, um, you, you, there's, there's detail on the drawings of where the grading is and the non-disturbed and the tree preservation, the sinkholes, but there are the bio-retention. But many of the comments are demanding a technical aspect, um, you know, the, the traffic is, traffic, lighting. I mean, all things that St. Louis County code require us to be able to demonstrate no adverse impact on those. And I really can't do those tonight. Uh, the stormwater, there's been enough comments made that will, we will do further investigation with MSD. I've, I've already communicated with Metropolitan St. Louis District. Um, and I'm not going to say that they're not saying there's not flooding problems, but I'm hearing a lot more flooding. And for me, I need to quantify what that is. Um, we have a site plan that's designed, providing bio-retention, which meets the requirements of St. Louis County and meets the requirements of MSD. But if there's something that's above and beyond, we need further investigation. Um, so I, I, I think, you, you, you know, relative to taking green space, um, you know, I think I mentioned in the plan, um, that this building and its parking, um, occupy about twenty-five percent of the site, seventy-five percent is still green. But traffic, I mean, there, there may be legitimate concerns with their safety that we need to investigate. And so I think our message is, we're going to respond to the information that has been mentioned. We, we took notes. Um, but I, I don't want to rebut and, and argue things because I think what we need to do is, is quantify things. The one thing I will say, uh, you, you know, that I want to point out is there was a comment made about a PUD or a CUP. I think the CUP provides the belts and suspenders that the citizens are looking for. It, it outlines the conditions that this project would have to live by. The existing conditional use permit had that. It, it addressed, it addressed lighting, it addressed landscaping. In that project, it was a twenty-three thousand square foot building where, as I mentioned, under sixteen thousand square feet. I, I think I, I, you, you know, the fact that, um, there was, um, a misunderstanding of, as far as what's advertised. Um, you, you know, the property is zoned R5 and as Mel mentioned, that's a six thousand. And as Mel mentioned, that's a six thousand square foot lot. So if you took our four and a half acres and divided by six thousand, that's approximately twenty-nine single-family homes that could go on the property. That's the zoning. What we're asking for is we're using the tool within St. Louis County's zoning ordinance, which is called a conditional use permit. And I write, this group home allowed under a conditional use permit. And the burden is on us to demonstrate no adverse impact to the residential character of neighbors. And that includes traffic, lighting and stormwater. And I think we need more time to investigate that. For the level of a petition, somebody's challenging the petition about its validity, I, you know, I want to look into that. I, I'm not sure where the, the application and the drawing submitted fell short of what's required. And, and I think, you know, the number of the questions raised about the operation, our ladies-in would like time to respond to those in writing, rather than something being misconceived tonight. You know, and again, I, I do this for a living, and I'll mention this, I grew up in Whispering Hills. So I was there in nineteen sixty-seven, my parents raised me, I know this neighborhood very well, I know this property very well. And we just want to take the time to get the right responses to the comments and I took very good notes. So I, I think that's where we'd like to end it this evening, Mr. Chairman.
And those responses would be available from the Department of Planning for any residents?
Absolutely.
That would like to see those?
Absolutely.
And this is not a, this is not a rush for zoning determination?
I can speak for the Department of Planning, I'm Gail Shod, I'm the acting director of the Planning Department. I will certainly disseminate the information that is provided to us from both our ladies-in and from the developer, from the engineer, to anyone that provides their email address. But as Mel said, I believe we have your email address as part of your registration for tonight's meeting. So Mel Wilson or me, we're available for phone calls or emails also during this whole process. And we would be happy to talk to anyone at any time. So I, with that, I would like to continue into our executive session, which has nothing to do with this zoning petition. That has to do with the correspondence item.
Okay, so the correspondence item is PC one sixty-three dash seventy-eight, security storage systems?
This is, this is an, an older CA that actually permits industrial, permits a variety of multi-tenant office warehouse uses and some many ware, many warehouses for self-storage. The, the purpose of tonight's correspondence is to clarify that a heating and cooling contractor's office with accessory ductwork, ductwork fabricating shall also be permitted. While you could, I, I believe that this was part of the original intent for this office warehouse, have this kind of facility. The, the user would like this clarified. So the correspondence before you is to clarify, to call that particular use out. A heating and cooling contractor's office with accessory ductwork fabricating shall also be permitted. There's no change to the building or the parking with this clarification.
Okay. We need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, I have it five zero. And we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion also, Bill Ballard.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it and we adjourn until December seventh.
Okay, thanks, everybody, I will.